Good evening. It is 5:00 on Tuesday, May 26. And I am calling us to order with Councilmember Jackson virtually. We have everyone else. So we're at a full dais. And we will be going into executive session. As our first item of business and for the public, if you happen to be watching on the streaming this early, our regular meeting will start at 6:30. So if we don't get done with the executive session, we will do it at the end of our meeting, but we will start our regular meeting on time at 6:30. So we are called to order at 5:00 with a full dais. And we will be going into executive session on Item 2A pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071 to deliberate upon, seek the legal advice of, and direct its litigation counsel regarding the Main Street Rehabilitation Project. It is 5:02, and we are in executive session.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I am recusing myself on this item.
And Councilmember Ennis will be recusing himself on Item 2A. We will see you at 6:30. Thank you, Councilmember Ennis. All right. It is 6:30. We are, we got out of executive session at 6:20 on Item Number 3. Take any necessary or appropriate action on matters posted for consideration in the I told him that he had done such a great job before, but several folks said that they closed executive session. There will be no action as a result of Item 2A. So we are moving on to Item 4. couldn't hear him. So he has agreed to do it again, and he's coming to the di, coming to the podium so We have a full dais. Councilmember Jackson is with us virtually. And I have a couple of things to read. everyone can hear him. Councilmember? The City Council reserves the right to adjourn into executive session at any time during
I'm not going to let that happen again.
the course of this meeting to discuss any of the matters listed below as authorized
If you'll bow your heads. Father, thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here tonight and are with us, watching
by the Texas Government Code. Consultation with an attorney, deliberations about real property, deliberations about gifts and donations, personnel matters, deliberations about security devices, and economic development.
from afar. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings, for life itself, for the measure of health
The City Council reserves the right to reconvene, recess, or realign the regular session, executive
we need to fulfill our callings, for sustenance, and for friendship.
session, or order of business at any time prior to adjournment. All matters listed below shall be eligible for both discussion and action unless otherwise
Thank you also for the ability to be involved in the useful work we do tonight, and for
specifically noted. It is 6:30, and we are called to order.
the honor of bearing the appropriate responsibilities.
This evening, we will be leading ourselves in pledges.
With that in mind, we pray for our mayor and for this assembled council.
So let's all stand up and say the pledge.
We ask that you would graciously grant us wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and rightness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, and personal peace in our lives and joy in our task. We pray for the agenda set before us tonight. Please give us an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of Bastrop. In your name we pray. Amen.
Excellent job, Councilmember Ennis. Thank you very much for that. Okay, council, we are moving on to Item Number 7A, Mayor's Report. And I have not as many things as last time, but a few things to go over. Most importantly, let's talk about the important things first. We got our CARES Act money, our first 20%. So that is $101,321 that has been deposited in the city of Bastrop's account, straight from the federal government, confirmed by Tracy Waldron. Let's have a round of applause for that.[292.83][292.83](Applause). They, I had a signature where I swore my children and my life and my home and everything else that we would follow all the rules. So I'm confident, it was easy to put my trust in our CFO. I know Ms. Waldron's going to make sure that we take care of that. Just for clarification for the audience to know, that is, that represents 20% of what we are eligible for on the CARES Act funding. We can request up to $506,605, but it is a reimbursement, and the funds have to be expended by the end of the year. The CARES Act, U.S. Treasury, as I spoke about last time, they have a lot of rules. Then it turns out Governor Abbott wanted to add just a few rules here and there, and TML has been providing clarification of what that money can be spent on. So Ms. Waldron's wading through all of that. But we are certainly appreciative of money that is intended to try to counteract issues that we've had from COVID. So it won't cover all of them, but it is certainly better than nothing. The other thing that we had a presentation on last time was the SAFER Grant. And we saw Chief Rosales, our fire chief, grinning from ear to ear. And I wanted to take this opportunity to personally thank Chairman Mike McCall and Congressman Mike Cloud for writing support letters for us for those grants. And more specifically, Drew Ross out of Chairman McCall's office and Eric Lawrence out of Congressman Cloud's office. Those were the staff people that really helped us. In fact, Eric sent us some information about the grant date being extended and some of the stuff they may, we may be able to get a waiver on some of the matching. There's just some details about the grant that Mr. Lawrence was up on, and they had extended the grant like the day, the night before it was due kind of thing. So I'm very, very thankful to those folks. You know, the old, "I'm here from the government, and I'm here to help." And they are from the federal government, and they have been extremely helpful, and the community should be thankful that we have such great representation. And one of the reasons that we have great representation is because we, in 2010, people filled out the census count. Did you see what I did there? Just went right onto the census. So if you have not filled out the census, please make sure that you do. If you have friends that need help, please help them get that help. There are a number of sources. It's extremely easy to do. Please encourage all your friends and neighbors. Everybody needs to be counted. Moving from federal and coming down to local, I told you guys last time that the EDC had given grants in a total of $400,000 out to several of the businesses. And many of the businesses have written some really nice thank you notes. But there was one letter that I got, and I just have to share a couple of sentences. This is from Tough Cookie Bakery. And some of you may or may not know, they opened their business the, within weeks of the fire. So they have really been through it. So in his letter, Mr. McEwen said, "Should you ever have a down day, you can think about not just the businesses, but all those impacted, like my younger manager who supports her elderly parents. You are who I'll tell my kids about when they ask how we were able to keep our business going." So that's how we make a difference in the community. And I just wanted to thank Tough Cookie Bakery and all of the businesses. They've all been very gracious, and all of that money went immediately to the community and immediately to good use. And while I'm on the EDC, everybody liking 921? You like the buildings going up, and we're rocking and rolling, and there is an art call. They are going to do a mosaic when you walk in the door, a six-by-six-foot mosaic. And an art call has gone out, and I just want to take this opportunity to make sure everybody in the public knows about the art call. It's due on May 30 at 5:00 p.m. And you can go to the EDC website. I know the Lost Pines Art Guild sent out a notice to everyone. And if any of you would like to submit your artwork ideas to do a mosaic, feel free to submit something. And speaking of our good things going on in the community, I wanted everything to be upbeat this week. Lost Pines Toyota partnered with the Salvation Army and handed out food boxes last Friday, and it was boxes for families. And I believe they told me it was 10 to 14 days for families of four in the boxes that they handed out. And I know that several organizations are doing those types of thing. I wasn't able to get over there last Friday, but I did want to thank Lost Pines Toyota and the Salvation Army, and anybody that volunteered for that effort, and anybody that donated to that effort. The other thing, my last good news, last item to talk about, is the Bastrop YMCA. And we got an update from them last time. And what happened between our last council meeting and now is Governor Abbott has said that the gyms can open, and the YMCA has chose that they are going to open on June 1st. If you visit their website, and you can just Google Bastrop YMCA, and it'll take you straight to their website. They have a long list of all the things that they are doing to sanitize. Their staff's going to be wearing gloves and masks, and all the things they're doing to make sure that folks stay safe. But their gym space on June 1st, it will be open from 9:00 to 12:00 in the morning and 4:00 to 7:00 in the evening, Monday through Friday, and 9:00 to 12:00 Saturday morning. They will start doing group exercise classes, and there's varying classes at varying times. And the Bastrop State Park Pool will open on June 1st. But hang on, and if you're at home, just hang on. Monday and Wednesday and Saturday, they will be open from 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. And Tuesday and Thursday, they'll be open from 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. It is adult swim by reservation only. That starts on June 1st. On June 15th, they have longer hours. I'm going to cough. Excuse me. They're going to have longer hours on Monday, Wednesday, and Saturday. They will start water fitness classes, and you can do reservations for family swim. So go to their website, ask them questions. But I know people are going to be curious about what was going on with the why. And since they are our recreation partner, I wanted to share that information with you guys. And that is, concludes my mayor's report. So for council member reports, we'll start on this end. Councilmember Ennis?
I don't have any activities to report, but there is something I'd like to say, Mayor, regarding, I've had some comments given to me about the fact that we don't wear masks on the dais. And I'd like to reiterate again that we have pretty good procedures here at City Hall. We all have our temperature taken when we walk in the door. We wear masks as we enter the door. We take them off when we're sitting up here because we're all social distancing. So I just wanted people to know that that's going on.
Thank you, Councilmember Ennis. I appreciate that. Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yeah, I want to echo your comments about the census. One of the beauties of our former government is representation. And the census goes a long way toward determining how many representatives we have to advocate for Texas at the federal level and advocate for our region at the state level. The other thing is almost $900 billion of federal dollars are made available based upon the census for capital projects in our communities such as streets, roads, bridges, schools, hospitals, and other public service projects. And so I want to encourage everybody to please, please participate in the census. I think the last number that I saw, we're just over 50% of participation. We need to kick that up quite a bit.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Nelson. Councilmember Rogers?
Well, on that same census subject, Main Street, I know they dropped it off at the, at our retail location, has probably handed out to most businesses little flyers trying to getting us to remind our customers to participate in the census. So I thought that was a great idea on Rebecca's part, so I wanted to let her know that.
Yay. Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just one little comment. I just hope everyone had a wonderful Memorial Day. And just remind everybody that Memorial Day was set aside for our fallen soldiers. So these are folks that are not here anymore. They stood up for our country, and we need to keep them on our minds more than just one day per year. Thanks.
Amen. Well said, Mr. Peterson. Councilmember Jackson, do you have anything?
No, nothing at this point in time. Thank you.
All right. We are done with Item 7B, moving to 7C. City Manager, do you have anything to report to us tonight?
I do have a couple of things. I've been instructed by the mayor that I'm not allowed to talk about COVID.
That's correct.
So I'm not, I'm not going to cover that one tonight. But she's right, we did find out about some new requirements, and so we're still looking into that, and we'll report back to council about the grant money at some point, once we have all of that figured out. On the census, we've talked about it enough. I think everyone understands the reason why it's important. If people need more motivation to fill out their forms and self-report, beginning after June 1st, the census workers are going to start visiting people's homes. And so if you don't fill out the form, they're going to come to your house and try to collect the information so that if people need other kind of incentives, that's another incentive. I'm sure they're nice people, but you know, you don't want them to come to your house. And the deadline for self-response and for the field collection by the census workers has been extended even further than what we talked about last time.
Yeah.
So they keep adding some more time to make sure everyone gets a chance to do it. The item that I wanted to let council know about tonight is related to the Planning and Development Department. The department, as most of the council members will know, is working on the configuration and the training and implementation for some new permitting software. The name of that, I don't know if everyone knows, is MyGov. And so they're working on that right now. A lot of staff members from different departments are also involved in that because it's not just for building permits or development permits, it's also for scheduling and for work orders. And so it's going to impact a lot of departments and try to streamline a lot of the workflows within the city. So that is scheduled to be ready to go and ready for the staff to start using it by the end of June. And on that same note, there are several of us on the staff that are working on putting together what we're calling a comprehensive plan for education and communication that's going to include staff training, both on the new, the new code, the building Bastrop code, also in the area of providing exceptional customer service. But the best way is to interact with the public and to help them when they're going through the permitting process, because as everyone knows, it can be daunting if you don't do it every day. So we're going to do some training in that area. We're going to involve some stakeholders, contractors, different people that are involved in the process, and talk to them about, you know, what works, what doesn't work, and have those conversations to get their input. We're going to work on improving the internal workflow and processes. And one of the ways that getting ready to use the software is helping is that to use the software and to set it up, you have to document all of your processes and say, "This is what we do when a permit comes in for a new roof or for plumbing or a plat for a subdivision." And so we've had to actually sit down, and everyone's had to think about what are the exact steps that have to take place. They have to go into the system. So part of it is it makes everyone think about it. And the second part is sometimes when you see that process written down, you notice that's not really the best way to do it. And so Assistant City Manager Joe has been spending quite a bit of time looking at those processes and trying to make sure that those look the way they should. So once that's, once that part's done, and we've gone through some training, and we've got all these workflows set up, the other thing that we're going to do is start a project to communicate to the public and educate the public regarding the B-3 code, as well as all of the standard building codes, to help them understand why do we have those codes? Because that helps people understand, "Why do I have to get a permit?" And so that's something that we feel like is an important project, is to educate the public and help people understand that we don't require permits just to make your life difficult. It's actually done because it improves the safety of your buildings, improves the safety of your homes, and also, in the case of the B-3 code, it helps get the community headed in a direction that the council and the community have set for the next 20 years or so. Once the, we go through that process and kind of lay down some of the basics, there will also be some how-to videos and some other type of information on the website that'll say, "If you're ready to apply for a permit, here's how you do it." And it'll show you how to go through the software and do all of that work. So stay tuned. We're not ready to do all of that right now, but we're putting the process and the plan together to do that. The change, the Planning and Development Department also, as some of you know, needs to have some work done on the actual physical layout. And so we're working on that also, and kind of working that in conjunction with some changes that are going to have to happen at all of the city buildings to allow us to open back up because of the COVID virus issues right now. And so we're going to work that together and kind of get the sneeze guards and the different things set up, as we also do some work to improve the layout of the department. And that's to help the interaction between the public and the planning department and make sure that people can get with the people they need to talk to. We will have more details later. It's not going to be a one-week project. This is going to be something that we're going to do over time, so it is going to take some time to lay all that out.
I'm giving Tracy the "that's eligible for COVID" grant, if we're having to make adjustments to the building to be able to open.
Exactly, yeah, right. Right, that's one of the ones that we've talked about is, because we've got to have sneeze guards, and we have to put up the little stations where people can use-
Hand sanitizer.
-the hand sanitizer and all of that. And that, and that's all actually specifically listed in the, in the grant funding or the opportunities.
Fantastic. Any questions for the City Manager? Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, council, we do not have any work sessions or briefings, so we are moving right on to staff and board reports. And our first item is Item 9A, Update on Main Street Rehabilitation Project. And there's Tony. Hi, Tony. All right, Mr. Joe?
Thank you, Mayor and council. And I'll, Colin, I've moved on to the first slide there on Main Street, if you want to advance that for our people watching from home. When I say that, I mean council, but-
He said, "Okay."
Okay. So you can see from Farm Street to Spring Street, we've actually completed the east side up to the YMCA's community garden there, which is this nice green area where there's a garden. And they will be working on the west side of there, where the post office is, and they'll start doing that probably at the 1st of June. So we'll be moving to this block and doing work again 1st of June.
Yes, the executive director said, "I'm pretty sure they're going to start when we open." I said, "Yes, we did that especially, so we'll get through it, but yes." And they'll still have access to their door, correct?
They will. We'll make sure they have access the entire time.
Because one of the things, the reason that that is important is from a COVID standpoint, when you enter the gym, you're going to enter, it's going to be one way in and one way out so that you're not bumping into people. That's one of the things they're doing for our safety. So that's why I was asking.
Absolutely. Well, and we will, and the contractors have been great accommodating everybody and making sure they can get in and out. Colin, I'm going to click to the next slide. So from Spring to Chestnut, the sidewalk on the east side has been complete, and the sidewalk on the west side has been completed except for the corners. And you'll notice they're working on the corners right now, and those should be completed by the end of this weekend, weather permitting. Those actually take quite a bit of time since they're such a large pool. We'll click again, Colin, sorry. We're going to go from Chestnut to Pine Street. And Chestnut to Pine, both of, both sides of the street have been completed there at 100% on the sidewalk. We still need street trees, of course. We still need to put in the benches and things like that and overlay the road. But what you'll notice, I don't know if you were on Main Street this weekend, but there were tables everywhere. There were tables on both ends of both blocks, and everybody's really using that extra sidewalk.
Sorry, if you'll go back.
Yep.
There's, Mayor Protem Nelson, do you have a question you want to ask?
Yeah, as I was walking the area, I noticed that there was, it seemed to be a scarcity of drains. It seemed like there was a drain close up to Chestnut, and the next drain was, was near the visitor's center. Is that going to allow for the appropriate drainage in the Main Street area? Because that seems to be downhill there. I just want to make sure that we're not creating additional problems, not saying that y'all are intent on doing that.
No, I'm going to let our engineer answer. I just can't signal him because he's not in the building.
Yeah, Tony, we can't see you, but we can hear you. Are you confident in the drainage on the west side of Main Street between Chestnut and Pine?
Yes, yes. It all drains, and we have increased the drainage, I guess connectivity to the drainage, and increased the slope slightly for it to make sure that it does drain. So yes, we are confident in-
And one, and one other question. There appear to be a couple of areas there where the, and I'm sorry, I'm not an engineer, but I'm going to try this out anyway. Some of the curbs had a little bit sharper angles than some of the other curbs, and it seemed to be somewhat of impediment to the parking, the parallel parking, or could appear to be impediment to the parallel parking there with such severe angles on, at the curbs. I was specifically referring to the area in front of John's-
If you're referring to the curb height, that's, that's to keep the sidewalk level and allow the water to drain down. So it's no, they're not extreme enough where a car door is going to hit it or anything like that. It's just to make sure that we do provide positive drainage to those, those drain inlets without reconstructing the whole roadway.
So knowing where you're talking about, near the barber shop and between the museum, that's actually the low point, which is probably why you see that it appears to be-
Well, I- I think you're missing my point. My point is the, the angles is a 45-degree or a 90-degree angle right there that appears to be more square than other areas that appear to have a little bit more rounded edges on there.
So Tony, I think what the problem is, is people are only seeing the top of the curb because it's got the silt fence, because that, because of the elevation, and it looks like you guys put silt fence down, and there's settlement in that area. So it looks sharper, but when it's, when we're done, it will look like all of the other curb faces. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. And especially in some areas where we had the road, the roadway slightly, once that's moved, then overlay is done, and it'll be a lot clearer.
What he said was-
Yep.
Yeah, Colin, can you help, or it's him? Okay. All right, what he's saying is it's at the low point, and that road is going to be cut down for the overlay. So it's as yucky as it's going to look right now, because what you don't want is to have part of your tire with a big cut below that. And so when they pull, when they get ready to do the overlay, they will cut that part of the road down, they'll pick up the silt fence, and the overlay will match the lip of gutter, and then that curb face will look like the other places where you can see the entire curb. Did I explain that right, Tony? He may not be able to hear us now.
I think he said yes.
He said yes? Okay. It's really bad in the low spots because they've-
Yes.
-put the curb in for a low spot, and it's not a low spot yet, so that's why all the sediment's building up there now. It's, I would say they're not done. That's why it looks the way it does.
And that's, that's what I was saying. That's the low spot, we just haven't planted the road to match.
And the mayor's addressed the third point I was going to bring up.
Oh, sorry.
So, but the, the second point, I think what I'll do to be fair to y'all, I think I'll take a picture and send it to y'all to give, to get some sort of response from y'all so that I can understand better why the, why the cut in there is so severe. And I'm talking about the upper part, not the lower part. Anyway, if I was an engineer, I could explain it better, but I'll send a picture with drawings. Thank you.
Perfect.
So I have a question before you go, before you change this picture. Well, a couple of questions. Did you look-
And so, when they pull, when they get ready to do the overlay, they will cut that part of the road down. They'll pick up the silt fence, and the overlay will match the lip of gutter, and then that curb face will look like the other places where you can see the entire curb. Did I explain that right, Tony? He may not be able to hear us now.
I think he said yes.
He said yes, okay. It's really bad in the low spots because they've put the curb in for a low spot, and it's not a low spot yet. So, that's why all the sediment's building up there now. It's, I would say they're not done. That's why it looks the way it does.
And that's, that's what I was saying. That's the low spot. We just haven't planted the road to match.
And the mayor's addressed the third point I was gonna bring up, so, so, but the, the second point. I, I think what I'll do to be fair to y'all, I think I'll take a picture and send it to y'all to give, to get some sort of response from y'all so that I can understand better why the, why the cut in there is so severe. And I'm talking about the upper part, not the lower part. Anyway, I, if I was an engineer, I could explain it better, but I'll send a picture with drawings. Thank you.
So, I have a question before you go, before you change this picture. Um, well, a couple of questions. Did you look at that, um, we, I had a phone call with you about the crosswalk in front of the YMCA, oh, not YMCA, the Visitor Center?
Yes.
So?
So, yes, I looked at the, I looked at that section, um, and we're talking at the corner of Pine and, uh, Main Street, correct?
Yes.
There, and so that's not a controlled intersection. That crossing would actually go away.
Okay, so if I am walking south on the east side of the, no, west side of the sidewalk towards Wells Fargo, and I'm in my wheelchair, I have to, where would you like me to cross if I wanna go to Maxine's?
You'll have to cross at the closest controlled intersection, which is Chestnut and Main.
So, I have to go back to Chestnut and Main before I can cross the street?
You have that option, or you can go, actually everyone, even if you're in a wheelchair or not, would need to go to the closest controlled intersection. The next one, I believe, is...
Walnut.
Water, Walnut? It's Walnut or Water. It's a, it's a good...
Well, it can't be Water because Water's running parallel to Main at this point.
Water has stop sign in this control, and it has to cross.
Yeah, but that's way down at the end is what she's getting ready to say.
No, I understand. So, so we could actually put in something here. Um, and I know we wanted to talk about that, but we'll just have to make sure that we change and do some improvement. So, when we put this mid-block crossing, it may require some additional pedestrian enhancements such as signage. Maybe we wanna put a flashing light, something to let people know that we're crossing. I will say the design speed is much slower, so it's probably a lot safer than it was before. But technically, that was not a, a legal crossing, which is why it's going away.
That seems weird to me that we're not putting in a crossing that we've had for, I don't know, ever?
That was my question. What's the difference between now and forever?
Was it an illegal crossing?
It was an illegal crossing. Um, while it was painted, it was not, it was not pedestrian appropriate. And that was the goal of this project, was to enhance and make it safer for pedestrians.
It was painted, though.
It's still painted. I don't disagree with you.
So, we, uh, oh, I'm not gonna go back history. Okay, so I, I, as a council member, feel like that would be, instead of making people go all the way down, sometimes it's easier to give them what they're gonna want, which is gonna be to cross the road and go back on the other side of Main Street?
Sure.
It might just be easier. The other question I have is that all your, your blue drawing is where the side of the, your new sidewalk is, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
How come on this picture, you don't show the cutouts into the parking spaces? You show a parallel parking all the way down, which it doesn't have. If you go back a slide onto where it goes from Main Street, from Chestnut to Spring, see where you got the big indents where the sidewalk comes out?
Yeah, those are actually different lane widths as well. So, when you cross Chestnut, the right-of-way is, is skewed quite a bit. There's 11-foot driving lanes, um, on the...
Okay, you're not understanding. Go back to the old slide. The, yeah, that one. There's some, some pavement that comes out in between the parking space, the islands. How come you don't have those in the blue here so we can actually see what you actually are put out there? You see what I'm saying?
Right, so the islands were incorporated into the blue. Does that make sense? You see the old island there on the corner here?
Yep.
And that's been incorporated into the blue.
Okay.
Are you talking about the bump out here somewhere?
Well, there's two bump outs between Chestnut and the Visitor Center. There are two bump outs that you just now poured. I wanna know why it's not on this blue.
Because it was field engineered. This is not a, this is not a depiction of what's out there. But this was an overlay of what we had exhibits. What we were gonna discuss in this meeting was where sidewalks were gonna be on both sides of the road and on one side of the road.
Okay, so what she's...
Which is why these exhibits are in here.
How did you guys determine where to put the bump outs in the field? What made you determine, like, was it where poles were or...
Those were locations of existing lights, existing poles.
You did it so we didn't have to remove a light pole?
That's correct.
So, I guess what I'm, what I'm asking is, is I don't have a problem with your bump outs. I'm just saying that when you send us a picture of what you're, you're doing, I would think that you would show that bump out so we would see what you're doing. You see what I'm saying? Your drawing here should look just like it does on the street. Oh, well, forget it.
So, this is, to be, to be clear, this is not an updated drawing based on what's out there. This is what was done prior to that everyone else has seen.
He, he's saying it's kinda graphic. It's not exact because at, when, when they were doing this, Tony hadn't walked it and gotten survey and known where the bump outs were gonna be.
What I'm kinda getting at, and I think I'm kinda touching base on what Lyle spoke with, is those bump outs that I was just asking about?
Mm-hmm.
Now, I'm not an engineer. Ask Tony.
Neither am I.
If you, normally, when you do a sidewalk, you'll see where they put the PVC pipe under it so the drain goes under the sidewalk or through the sidewalk, right? Where those bump outs are, there's no, the drain, you know, the drain automatically, the water automatically goes to the west side because that's the way, you know? You got these bump outs, but there's no way for the water to get to that drainage all the way down at the museum unless it dri- unless it runs over the bump out.
So, they relocated the box to that farthest bump out. What there is is a drain pipe where the, that's connected to where the one that you're talking about that was originally at the museum has now been moved farther north.
Okay, there is one at the museum. There's a drainage in there.
Correct, and there's been an additional one, additional one added farther north.
Okay, I, I understand that. But between the one that's further north up by, like, Cripple Creek and the museum, you've got a bump out that doesn't have a way for the water to get under it or through it without going over it. That's what I'm trying to say.
Curb line in that area is, the curb line in that area has been graded so that as, once the roadway has been, has had the mill and overlay treatment done to it, the water will flow along the curb and go around the bump out.
It's gonna go around the bump out?
It won't have to go through it. It'll go around the bump out.
Well, actually, the downhill is the buildings unless...
No, he said the road's graded that way.
Okay, all right, we'll see. I don't know, so I'm just gonna wait and trust you.
Before you go on, I'd like to go back to, uh, the issue of Pine and Main for a few minutes. You know, folks, that's probably one of the busiest pedestrian intersections on Main Street. We have two parking lots adjac- not adjacent, but as close as possible to that corner. And it's the only, uh, way, not the only, but the shortest way from those parking lots down to, down to neighbors, et cetera. So, I think we need to make it as pedestrian-friendly as possible.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree. Councilmember Ennis and Tony, um, for you and Mr. Jobe, I think what council's telling you, and I'm gonna be putting words in your mouth so you can say that's not exactly what I said. We gotta figure out a way to have a legal crosswalk. And we really don't care if it's on the south side of Pine Street or the north side of Pine Street. Whichever way it works good, but people are gonna cross Main, and they're not gonna walk down all the way to Chestnut. They're not gonna walk all the way down to Walnut. And so, it's, it's that classic, like, the universities where they don't pour the sidewalks till they see where the students walk. And so, we know it's gonna be a problem, so, or not, it's not really a problem, it's an opportunity. We know it gets used all the time, so let's make it safe for them.
So, we've already talked about making improvements there. I mean, I knew it was, I knew that a lot of people traveled that area, um, and I knew it was gonna be an issue, but we just had to figure out a way to address it. Whether it be a stop sign to make it into a controlled intersection at Pine Street, or we add some additional, you know, crossing ahead, pedestrian crossing ahead kind of times.
Safe and inexpensive is...
And, and that's right. It will be. The addition of the ramp will be the most expensive part.
Now, I'm not a, a urban engineer, and, uh, but could you explain to me who determines whether it's legal or not? I mean, it's our intersection.
So, well, you know what?
This is for me and the folks out there that probably don't know.
It's, it's not that you can't cross, it's just that it's not a controlled intersection, and it wasn't planned to be that way. So, we can make it legal by adding appropriate signage.
So, legal is a misnomer. It's not illegal. It's just not...
It was, previously did not meet a standard. It was just paint on the ground.
But that doesn't make it illegal. It just doesn't meet somebody's standard.
It doesn't meet the state requirement.
Oh, okay, now you're talking.
Yeah, so it doesn't meet the state requirement, which, but you can do that with signage or other improvements. It's just a matter of adding them to it.
I don't think anybody's opposed to a stop sign at the end of Pine Street. Everybody stops there anyway. And it seems like that would be safer for the pedestrians.
So, I would suggest that we look at pedestrian signs first, just because once you start to separate the blocks, when you, and Tony, you can chime in anytime.
Oh, 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 wait, wait, whoa, 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 whoa. I'm not talking about a stop sign on Main Street. I'm talking about a stop sign on Pine Street. But you're saying for it to be legitimate, you, you would have to have stop signs on Main Street to stop for Pine? And nobody stops for Pine now.
Main is a thoroughfare road.
Does that make any sense?
But, we can, that, that doesn't mean that we can't add signage where you hit the button and the light, the sign lights up.
Stop for pedestrian, when pedestrians and crosswalks?
Correct, just like something you would see in the parking lot at Walmart or, or HEB, right?
What about the, the, the way we have it on, I don't know if it's Alley A or B, one of them? We need an A, name those, so I don't know which ones were. But for the school where the kid, they can push the button and then it lights up so people know when they're crossing or something?
Cha-ching!
Yeah, but there are, there are cheaper options that are, that will...
But it doesn't have to be a stop sign. It can just...
And it could be a stop sign, but the only...
I don't wanna stop sign. I'm just saying.
Right, well, I'm, I would not recommend a stop sign simply because when you split up the blocks and you have a certain number of parking spaces within a block, say 24, now you're required to have ADA compliant parking as well. And all the ADA compliant parking on Main Street, the majority of it is in the parking lot, same side as Maxine's. So, if you asked me, how would someone in a wheelchair get there? They would be in that parking lot, and then go straight to the center to Maxine's. They wouldn't have to cross. But for anybody else that's walking, we can take care of that, but you have to have...
Without the stop signs on Main Street on each side of Pine, you're encouraging vehicles and pedestrians to be in the same place at the same time. That's why it doesn't meet the regulation. Mayor Protem Nelson?
Well, to meet the legal requirements, it's just a matter of signage and designate that as a pedestrian crossing, which could be done with signage, lighting, what, what, whatever, as long as it met certain criteria. They don't put deer crossing in areas that say, we're gonna train the deer to cross this area. They put deer crossings where deer have already been crossing that area.
Correct.
One of our projects is, that's the extent of my engineering. One, 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 one of the basic processes that we wanna put in place was to make it pedestrian-friendly. If we don't allow our pedestrians to move from the east side to west side at, at major points that have already been established, then we're defeating our own purpose, are we not?
I, I agree. I think that would be an appropriate space to put a mid-block crossing.
Okay, since we've gone on to analogies about deer, can I offer that we've beat this dead horse and they get the idea? And they'll bring us back what they're gonna...
We'll fix it, yeah.
All right.
We'll be the, we'll find the most cost-effective solution.
Are we okay if we keep, keep going? Everybody cool?
Um, I just wanted to point out that they did, they did actually put the cross, the, uh, stop bars in. They've been done. Um, and I executed that corner this morning when somebody passed the stop bar and had no problem.
Councilmember Ennis, you spoke to me about the new stops, stop bars that were farther back and said that it helped immeasurably in making that turn, so.
Good.
I try to make it every time I come across the river, just for grins, to see. And, uh, yeah, it works so much better with the stop bars back.
Perfect. I do the exact same thing every time I drop pass or I throw my money.
A question about that. I know we talked, you know, about putting stop back like you did, but then we all, the council also discussed maybe putting no right turns so people wouldn't creep up. Is that something we're gonna come up, come again, come back to us later? Is that something else that's gonna come back to us later?
Yeah, if we, if the, if the decision is to go with no right turn, we'll have to bring that back to council for approval.
We were kinda gonna do it instead, do the stop bars first, see if that solved it or if we were still getting complaints. And if, because adding the no right turn...
Okay, I just didn't know what the process was gonna be. Okay, thank you.
This is the first step in the process. That's easy to add at a moment. Yeah, yeah.
And it could be that we add another sign that says, you know, watch for pedestrians to stop here, and that may do it. That way, when there is no pedestrian traffic, they can creep up and turn right.
For clar- for clarification, it's no right turn on red, not no right turn.
That is absolutely correct.
Councilmember Ennis?
We, we don't wanna give them the option of if there's no pedestrian, they turn right.
And that can be the decision we make. I'm just, we're gonna go through some steps.
Then they're up far to see what the traffic is. That's, that's the issue we've got right now.
That's right. I was just, I was just saying that there are times when Main Street's not full of people. Um, it's like, you know, midday or...
I think what we were talking about is when someone, a bigger vehicle is turning in, you're having them stop back. They got plenty of room to turn in.
Yep.
But if they creep forward and somebody wants to turn in, now you're in his, in our way, whether there's a pedestrian on the sidewalk or not. That's what I think Bill, Mr. Ennis is talking about.
And in theory, if that restaurant traveling on Chestnut was to slow down enough to make that turn, that vehicle would turn right at the same time.
Well, yeah. Have you seen the way people drive?
I'm just, I'm just trying to help. Give as many options as we can.
So, Tony, what I hear Councilmember Rogers and Councilmember Ennis saying is, take a long, hard look at it, and you may recommend from an engineering standpoint that we not allow right turns on reds. And if that's something that we need to consider, let's consider that sooner rather than later.
Yep, I agree.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Jackson, you're okay with all this so far? Okay, just checking.
Um, Pine Street to Water, um, we're actually, or I say, we, the contractor's making, he's laying out the center line as we speak. They've been doing that all day. Um, there's quite a bit of road work. You can see that's, you see that dark line in the center of the street there? That'll be the new center line of the roadway, and that'll continue all the way to Water. So, go down one more, Colin, from, get from Pine to Wal- Walnut. So, from Pine to Walnut, you'll see they're marking the center line, and there'll be sidewalks on both sides of the road.
Okay, I had a question about this one because it says sidewalk to right-of-way, and then there was the gap, the grass strip. I guess the grass strip comes in on Walnut to Water, so I'll hold my question to the next slide and never mind.
Well, let's move to the next slide.
Well, no, is everybody okay with the, go back.
Right, so I have a question. If I read these slides right, on Main Street, the, the lanes are 11 feet, correct?
They're 10-foot in this, on the southern section. Once you get south of Chestnut, they're 10 feet.
So, and the, and we're looking at making the sidewalk how long, how wide?
It...
It varies.
It does vary. Um, it varies based on, on the building, where the building sits. So, what we've done is lay out the center line, have a 10-foot driving lane, 9-foot for parking, and then whatever's left becomes sidewalk all the way to the building or all the way to the edge of the right-of-way. So, it varies in some spots, and Tony, you can chime in here, um, but I would say anywhere from 6 to 13 feet.
So, it varies, but it's always wide enough for ADA compliance, right? We always had enough room for that?
Yes, in this area, they're typically about 13 feet between Pine and Walnut. That's including both the sidewalk and the street skates.
Okay, so my point being is, is from Pine Street on the east side, I'm wondering if we need that much sidewalk? It's not, I don't see that as being as much pedestrian-heavy as the Main Street is because we're gonna have tables out and things like that sort. And I guess I don't want, I know we all wanted to enhance, you know, the entrance into Main Street and things, but also people's yards and their homes is also an enhancement. So, do we have to have 13 feet of concrete? I mean, can we narrow it down to something so we have a little bit more yard and, you know what I'm saying? I guess I just, just because we, all of it's our easement, is it's, is it, I just wanted to, I don't, after you pour it all, I don't want us to be like, wow, that's a lot of concrete. You know what I'm saying? I want us to think about how much of this yard and stuff we're taking up and what the look's gonna be like of all this concrete. And do we even have a purpose for all of this? What I'm just trying to make sure we think about it before we pour it all.
Sure. Uh, Doc, look like you wanna say something?
Right, uh, I mean, I was gonna say, we've got the easement, and I think we should utilize it because that's what is in existence now. As we develop and as more things happen, that street will probably change. It won't always necessarily be that way, so I wouldn't cut back on it because you don't know what's gonna be there in the future.
And, and Tony, not all of the sidewalk is 13 feet in that section, correct? Some of it is grass strip, or maybe it's 13 feet.
That's right. Some, some of it varies, and, and also, I'd like to point out that that 13 feet also includes the trees and benches and, and, uh, so both the ADA route and the street skate, where the ADA is against the right-of-way, creating more of a buffer from the vehicles. Um, so the narrower you make it, the closer you're getting people to the vehicles. And then between the ADA strip, uh, you have both benches and trees in that area.
Oh, that makes it look nicer than just a bunch of, thank you.
Yeah, it's not just a sea of concrete.
Yes. Yes. Um, so Colin, you can advance one more, and we'll go from Walnut to Austin.
Hang on, Councilmember Ennis has.
Oh, sorry.
While, while the word benches is being thrown around, is the city buying those benches? Are you going out and asking for donations for them like they were downtown, uh, in the downtown area? And are we matching the benches that we have downtown?
We, we, in the budget, there is a budget for the benches, um, and they match as closely as we can.
That's what exists.
Yeah.
That's what?
They aren't exactly the same because they couldn't find the exact, but they have found benches that are as close to the existing benches as they could get, is what I understood.
Correct, they're black, they're metal, um, I mean, they don't have, obviously not the plaques.
The street trees that are shown and the benches that are shown and the trash cans that are shown are included in the bid.
Correct.
Okay.
And, and we have actually reduced some of the street trees because of the hauntings. So we laid them out every 30 feet, but, and that was the budget. Um, but as we went through, we realized, well, you can't put some here because there's an awning, or you can't put some here because there's an existing tree, so we've already saved some money there that we're using on the drainage.
But in this area that Councilmember Rogers is speaking to, it really will have that pattern of tree, bench, tree, some space, tree, bench, tree.
We have done as much as possible to make the public realm, if you will, and everything on the street edge as pedestrian-friendly as possible, and then you can do what you like past that on your property.
Thank you. Everybody good? Okay, next slide.
Okay, so from Walnut to Austin, um, again, sidewalk on the east and west side of the road.
I was trying to get your attention, Mayor, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I lost you.
That's okay.
There you go, go ahead, Councilmember Jackson.
Uh, since they were talking about the benches and, um, what was happening with the Main Street from before, although it's in the budget, we might be able to, um, take some of the money, I mean, or it might be a good project for the Main Street project or the Main Street Board to do a fundraiser, they can get those benches labeled, and that would be extra funding that they could do other things that need to be done downtown. So I would recommend that or, uh, you know, at least suggest it to them. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, yes, sir. I, my only issue is, I want the benches when the project's done and I don't want them not there because they're doing fundraising.
And I think he wants to.
No.
Main Street to sell plaques.
Yes, I got you.
And attach them to the existing benches.
But the benches would be there, it's just as a follow-up, it would be a great fundraiser for the Main Street program.
To have sponsors for the benches, yeah, okay. I, I know Ms. Gleason is watching online, so I'm sure she's already made notes.
She's probably already written a flyer.
Councilmember Ennis?
That's kind of where I was going, Councilman Jackson, because I've always wanted to dedicate a bench and there weren't any to be dedicated, so now there will be, and I think that's a great program for us to pick up with Main Street.
But, but you know, that then still, like, everybody gets to sit there, right? Or do I have to call and say, Councilmember Ennis, can I sit on your bench?
Well, I've sat on a bunch of other people's benches, so I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna argue.
Yes, I wanted to buy a bench too, that was another reason why, so that's a great idea, Councilmember Ennis.
Yay, all right.
So again, I'm sorry.
Keep, keep going.
So from Walnut to, um, to Austin, which we've talked about, there's sidewalk on both sides of the road, again, they're laying out the street, and you can see in this area, perhaps, you can't anyway, that's still grass, but you see how the, actually the green, the dark line for the center, so there'll be some additional paving work done in that section, street work.
Additional paving, but you're putting your sidewalk against the right-of-way line to Councilmember Jackson's point, we're establishing our right-of-way line so we don't ever have issues with that again, and that puts the pedestrians as far from the traffic as it can be.
Absolutely.
And that grass area is maintained by us, but we know that most always the property owner ends up mowing it if the.
Yes.
Okay. If they want it mowed more frequently.
Right, but the specific landscape we're putting in, we'll have irrigation and we'll be taking care of that.
It'll be nice, okay.
Um, so I'll click again, Colin, so from Austin to Water, um, that is where the sidewalk on the west side stops, um, and that will be part of, so to be clear, there will be sidewalk there, it will be part of this project.
It'll be the loop trail, the River Loop Trail that BEDC is funding, and they got a grant, and then they're working with the Highway Department for the bridges to get over, so, um, that, perfect slide. So that's why we weren't putting it in because BEDC has already funded that part.
Yeah, so, so as you see what's right there, this was originally the, the entire River Loop Trail, um, now, the part I have circled in yellow is gonna be what's added on.
And council, you'll remember that, um, two times around is a 5K, so it would give us an opportunity to run a 5K without having to have traffic controls, which makes Chief Nagy extremely happy. And the funky green is making up the elevation, it'll be like a switchback to get you onto and off of the bridge, and the Highway Department has already included that in their bid set.
That's correct, and the, if, I received an email, I believe today, um, TechStop is near approval for this project, so we should get started and go to bid. I think about the time this one ends, this one may start.
So it'd be kind of cool. Councilmember Ennis?
What's the ETA on, on TechStop finishing?
Ooh, that's a tricky one. Um, I spoke to Willie just the other day, and you talking about for the overpasses? To clarify, um, I believe.
They're scheduled.
Not this, not June of '21, but June of '22. That's all four lanes, so they should have, the ones they're working on now, this next summer, '21, and then the main lanes the following, '22.
Thank you.
And that's it, unless there's nothing else.
Council, do you have any other questions for staff? Council, I do want to bring to your attention, you had a document at the dais, we received a letter from the agents of the owners of 702, 704, they are available to you and they will be a part of the record of this meeting. Moving on to item 9B, update on review of traffic concerns on Wilson Street. Chief Nagy.
You're up.
Oh, City Manager Wood.
I'm gonna start.
Okay.
I think there's gonna be a couple of us that need to speak on this one. Um, you should have received at your seat tonight a memo from the police chief, uh, from Chief Nagy, and also a page that has some numbers that I'll go over in just a second. The first thing that I wanted to address is that at the last meeting, last city council meeting, there were seven residents.
Excuse me, City Manager Wood, did Councilmember Jackson, I just want to make sure he's seen the document. Councilmember Jackson?
It was emailed, did you receive that, Councilmember Jackson?
You're on mute, but we think you say you're looking for it.
Right, I had not seen it, but, uh, I'll be looking for it now.
Okay.
Oh, yes, there, it is, and it's there.
Okay, good.
I just had, okay.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Wood, I just wanted to make sure he had it.
No problem.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Absolutely.
So the, the purpose of the memo, um, that I asked for from Chief Nagy was to have him, uh, give council a summary of what the police department had done in response to, uh, inquiries from the neighbors or the residents on Wilson Street. Unfortunately, in one of the communications that council received at the last meeting, there was a statement that the chief had not responded or not been responsive, and so I asked him to write the memo because I knew he had responded and I wanted him to detail what he had done. And so you'll see on, in that memo that, uh, on, on April 20th, when he was first contacted, uh, he was able to set up a time to meet, uh, later that same day, uh, with the resident that was concerned about some of the traffic issues on the street, and so they talked about speeding, uh, went through a number of different issues that they, that the neighbors had concerned about, and he kind of talked about the instructions the patrol officers were given, and that during, one of the issues that's important for council to be aware of that may not have been talked about a lot, is that during the COVID-19 matter that we're dealing with right now, almost every police department I'm aware of had some kind of guidelines where they, they actually instructed officers not to be as concerned about minor traffic offenses because that created more contact between people, between the officers and the people driving the cars.
Like rolling through a stop sign.
Yes, or, or an expired registration sticker, or your lights out on your, your license plate, that kind of thing.
Not something that we would have widely advertised, but something that we would have done internally to protect the officer.
You wouldn't have seen an article in the paper or something, but it's for the public and the officer both. So that was part of the conversation they had, and that, that came up, I think, in one of the letters that.
Mr. Wood, Councilmember Ennis?
The only problem with that city manager is that, uh, with the COVID, uh, sheltering in place, we have more people on the streets, walking and biking and, and aware of the speeding and the running the stop signs. I understand the, the theory behind.
Right.
Not stopping, but it's kind of a two-edged sword.
It is, it is, and, and since that time, that, that directive from the chief has been rescinded, we're back to normal now, so it's no, it's no longer an issue. So, one of the things that the chief did that I thought was a great idea, he actually sat in the, in the car, in an unmarked car with the resident that was concerned about the speeding, and they watched to see what was going on, and, uh, in my 20 years of doing this, I've had a number of chiefs do that, and oftentimes what happens is people realize there's not quite as much speeding happening, but when you're standing in your yard, to be fair to people that are observing it, when you're standing still in your yard and you see a car go by, it seems like they're going really fast. And so it helps to sit, it helps sometimes for a resident to be able to sit down with a radar gun and see exactly what's happening on their street, and so that's what, uh, Chief Nagy did with this resident. Uh, later, uh, after that, the, there was the speed display sign that most of you are familiar with, the digital display sign that shows the speed the cars are traveling at, that was set up in the 1600 block of Wilson Street. Market Patrol Unit was set up as a deterrent at Cedar and Main, uh, that was a, an unmanned patrol car that was there just to serve as a deterrent, that's done sometimes, and it's pretty effective. And then the speed sign was moved, uh, to a different part of Wilson Street on April Uh, on May 1st, that's when chief, um, kind of returned the traffic enforcement back to normal, uh, even though we still had some COVID issues going on. But between May 1st and May 12th, you'll see where the chief wrote that the Patrol Division spent about 12 hours during those 12 days in the 16 to 1700, 16 to 1700 block of Wilson Street, and two warning citations were written for speeding. So they didn't, they didn't observe a lot of significant speeding at that time. There was a study done, and I don't remember if this came up at the last council meeting, in September of 2019, so last fall, there was a study done of the speed and the traffic counts, and you'll see that that chart, or a summary charts included in the middle of the page there. And what it shows you is that, uh, you can see that there were, between September 13th and 19th, there were about 12,000 vehicles, and, and it gives you the breakdown there, 2009, 2009 vehicles were traveling over the speed limit up to 35, so somewhere between 31 and 35. And then the, the terminology that Chief Nagy uses is that you had 571 vehicles that fell into the enforceable zone, which is 36 and up, and it says 36 to 60 there, but really it's anything that would be over 36. And so that calculates to where you have 4.79% of the vehicles that are in the enforceable range, and of, of those, when you look at the total, only 0.89% were over 40 miles per hour. So that just gives you a good feel for how people are traveling on that street. At the last council meeting, you will remember that there was a request from council to look at the traffic and look at the speeds, so Chief Nagy and actually Assistant City Manager Job also both put out equipment to study the traffic, and so you have a summary on, on the page there, says speed statistics at the top. There were two different sections of the street that were measured, and so what you see there, kind of the part that I think is the important part to get, is on the total line on the first chart where it says total on the, on the last row, you had 7,245 cars during that seven-day period, and of those, 281 cars were again in that enforceable range, which is about, about 36 and up. And then if you look at the second chart, which was same dates, May 13th to 20th, but it was in the 1800 block, uh, you had about 6,673, so 6,700 cars, and about 146 of those cars were traveling in what you call the, uh, enforceable range or over the 30, 35 miles per hour. It's also important to note a couple of other things. You see there a statistic called the 85th percentile, some of you have been doing this for a little while, so you've probably seen that, that is how speed limits are set, and so, kind of like the idea that Mayor Schrader mentioned earlier where you wait and put the sidewalks down once the students start walking around the university, same idea, when TechStop or a city, anybody's gonna figure out what the speed limit should be, you put the equipment out, or when you're trying to decide if it should be adjusted up or down, you put the equipment out, measure all the cars, and you try to set the speed limit at the speed where 85% of the people driving on that road would be at or below. And so, in this case, the 85th percentile is 32.77 miles per hour. So again, that means that of all the cars that were clocked on that road, 85% of them were going at or below 32.77 miles per hour, so approximately 33 miles per hour.
And the speed limit's 30.
And the speed limit's 30. So what that would tell you is the speed limit's about where it needs to be, uh, is about, according to that study. And then the percentage of enforceable, the ones that are going over the 36 mile per hour number, uh, is about 3.88%. Second chart, you get some similar results, uh, the 85th percentile ended up being 31.65 miles per hour, so same thing, 30 mile per hour street, according to the 85th percentile rule, the speed limit should be 31.65, so you're about right where it needs to be. And then 2.18% cars, uh, were, of the cars were going in the enforceable range, which means if an officer would have observed that, they would have received a ticket. If, if you have more questions about the data, uh, we can have Chief Nagy come up here, he's more of an expert on that, but I just wanted to hit the highlights of the data. Um, one thing that was noted in, in all the studies that have been done on Wilson Street is that the median or average speed, um, median and mean aren't exactly the same, but they're close in this case, um, the average speed that people are driving on those streets is actually just under 30 miles per hour. There are people speeding, but, but there's enough people going under the speed limit that the average ends up being less than 30. So that's the situation as far as the, the data that we have, and then the other issue that I mentioned at the beginning that I wanted to make sure everyone was aware of is that Chief Nagy did actually do quite a bit of work to respond to the concerns, and just wanted to make sure council was aware of that.
Councilmember Rogers?
I was just hoping that this, this chart that you, that you supplied to us is a great chart, thank you. I was hoping maybe we can get that chart, since it's not part of the packet, that people can see, maybe we could get out where, where the public could see those numbers, because they're not gonna be able to re, remember everything you just said, since it's not on a screen.
Right, right.
And hopefully get those out to the people that work in terms, so they can see those charts that you, you spent so much time with.
We've got the contact information for the folks that wrote their comments in, we might reach out to them and ask them if they would, if they didn't supply their email address, if they would like it, we could email them the charts.
I think we should have them, so we, uh, City Secretary and I can work on that.
Yeah, I think that's a great way. Because to your point, it doesn't step away from the fact that if you are standing in your front yard drinking a cup of coffee, it feels fast.
It does.
When they're going, when they're going by.
Yeah, it does, absolutely.
Councilmember Ennis?
Uh, thank you for saying that, Mayor, because, uh, the city manager and I've had discussion about this, and, um, I live on Pecan Street, as you know, and we're having the same problem on Pecan Street that Wilson's having. I think it's all of the streets that go north and south that have long stretches on them, and the issue we've got now with your great research and your charts is it doesn't solve the problem. The problem is that our residents feel uncomfortable on their streets because their perception is people are going too fast. So, how do we solve it? Do we lower the speed level? Do we, uh, uh, yes? Assistant City Manager is making hand gestures behind you.
I know, yeah.
Uh, do we lower the speed limit? Do we put in more street signs? Do we use up more police, uh, presence? What do we do? But this is, this points out that it's not as bad as the perception is, but the perception is reality to these folks.
Right.
And it doesn't solve the problem, so.
Right, and I didn't mean to say that just because there's not as much speeding as people might have thought, that there's not something that can be done, or something that should be addressed. Because you're right, you and I had a conversation, and I think we both agreed on that. So, you mentioned some of the possibilities. There's all kinds of things that can be done. The speed limit can be adjusted. Sometimes you can, the engineers look at the street, and they first go to that 85th percentile, but then they can also take into account other factors. And that can be everything from the width of the street to the number of cars on the street. So, the 85th percentile is kind of the starting point, but then the engineers can make adjustments depending on other factors on the street. So, that is a possibility. The other, there are other possibilities. Councilmember Ennis and I talked about a lot of them. Everything that you see, everything that you've seen everywhere you drive, you see everything from many, many stop signs to many, many speed humps, and there's all kinds of things that people do. What the Assistant City Manager would like to talk about is something that actually fits into the building bash drop discussion that happened over the past couple of years, and something that's already in there as far as this idea of favoring or giving priority to pedestrians. And that's kind of what I think Councilmember Ennis is getting at, a way to, even though maybe it's not a speeding issue, we still want to make it as safe as possible for the pedestrians and the bicyclists and those people. So, I will, if it's okay with the mayor, let City Assistant City Manager Jobe talk.
Yes, Councilmember Jackson?
I agree wholeheartedly with Councilmember Ennis, because I've gotten calls from people, and I told them that things were being done to address it, but even though it may not seem like it's, I mean, it may not be as fast as it appears to be, there's still quite a bit of concern. And if we can do anything to appease them, so that they will have a better understanding of what's going on, and as we're trying to make, you know, the bash drop a more walkable city and a more pedestrian friendly city, I think we need to look into that. I think partially, part of the problems also were because of the quarantine that we're going under, there are a lot more kids that were out at different times, there were a lot more families were out in their homes that normally aren't home, and so, it was noticed quite a bit more because of that. But it is a concern, and it's something that we need to not really take lightly, and just try to look at it and see what we can do.
I agree, Councilmember Jackson.
So, it's things like bike lanes, right?
Right.
Paint for a bike lane.
Right.
Just like Main Street, narrow the lanes and people will slow down.
Exactly the same concept.
Posting a speed limit sign of 25 is not going to make anybody slow down.
If the argument is people aren't observing the 30 mile per hour sign...
They're probably not going to observe the 25.
Exactly.
Well, and the problem with bike lanes is that cuts down on people's ability to use the front of their house for parking for a get together, or, I mean, it creates other problems. A bike lane does. City Manager Rumble and I talked about that on several occasions, and she said, "We'll just put in bike lanes." Well, I surveyed the people on Pecan Street, and they just went up in smoke over it. So, we're between a rock and a hard place.
Well, and the other thing that I want to caution us about, and I'm saying this delicately and bracing myself for if someone misunderstands it, I don't ever want us to take steps that makes someone believe their kids playing in the street is now safe. If you have a toddler who's going to chase a ball, they need adult supervision. And I don't want us, it's not a park, it's a road. And I have had the telephone conversations where someone has said to me, "Well, but my kids are playing in the street." And I said, "Please, don't tell me you are encouraging your children to play in the street, because that's not a good idea." So, Councilmember Peterson?
I just want to add to what everyone else is saying, especially Councilmember Ennis. Lowering the speed limits, it's not going to help. People don't care about speed signs. They run through them all the time. I swear, I sit on my Porsche, I can see a car coming around from College Street, and I can swear they're doing 50 before they get to Emile Street. And then, when school's in session, you've got the school signs, the lights come on flashing 20 miles an hour, and nobody drives 20 miles an hour around the schools. So, I don't know what the solution is.
I'm looking for who's speeding, because it's never, every person who calls me, it's everyone else in town who's speeding on their street, but it's not them. So, I'm still trying to find out who it is that's speeding, because it's nobody who's complaining. Councilmember Jackson?
Right, something also, and I can't speak specifically to that street or that area, but I think a lot of it is that the kids are maybe in the street and out of their yards, because there's no sidewalk. I know we're addressing sidewalks in some future development and everything like that, but I think if we had sidewalks, that would also help with the situation as well, because at least they would have the sidewalks to walk on, and a lot of kids have to walk in the street, since there is no sidewalk.
Yes, sir. And walking in the street is not the same as playing in the street. So, thank you for bringing that up. I'm not saying that you can't walk down the street. Thank you. Councilmember Ennis?
Well, I disagree with everybody about lowering the speed limit. I think we ought to lower it to at least 25 and put in more stop signs, because it's the long stretches on Pecan Street, and I think same thing on Wilson, that creates these raceways. And that's basically what they are. And back in the old days, they used to hop the rain railroad tracks, and we know some folks who have died doing that. So, I don't understand what the opposition to lowering the speed limit on the long stretches of Pecan, Wilson, and the other long streets, and putting in more stop signs.
Well, on the stop sign side, you and I've had this conversation, and I'll share with the rest of the council, the engineers, traffic engineers, will tell you that stop signs are not to be used for traffic, for speed control. And the reason, there's a lot of reasons they say that. One of them is that oftentimes, you actually end up having more accidents when you add more stop signs, because you have more cars that are stopping and then speeding up again. So, people are having to pay attention to when the cars in front of them are slowing down or stopping, which they should do, obviously, when you're driving. But whenever you put more controls on an intersection, the result is actually that you typically have more accidents at that intersection. And so, the traffic engineers always recommend against using stop signs to control people's speed, because that's not what their intended use is. I understand that not everyone agrees on that.
Yes, my response to that is, it's a great academic exercise, but it doesn't solve anything in reality. It once again gives you the, oh, this will happen if that happens, but it doesn't solve the problem. It's a reason for not doing it, and it doesn't solve any problems.
Yeah, and to be clear, our intent is not to say nothing needs to be done. If people think something needs to be addressed, and the council agrees, then it's our job to try to find some solutions that you can talk about. We're just not recommending the stop sign solution. Trey is going to show something that we do recommend. Before I let him talk, I'm glad, Mayor, that you made the distinction. I was going to try to make it, you did it more eloquently than I would have, but there is a fine line between saying, "We want to make the street safe, so that the kids can ride their bikes or walk along the edges of the street," because there aren't sidewalks. And to Councilmember Jackson's point, we would love to have sidewalks on every street. City can't afford to do that. You know, that may be a long term goal, if you try to add sidewalks on all the streets. Right now, the city can't afford to do that, and so, we have to find other ways to do it. But finding ways for people to safely walk or ride their bike along the edge of the street is different than making it safe for children to play in the street. And so, those are very different goals, and I don't think anyone should ever get the idea that the goal is to make it safe for kids to play in the street. So, I'm glad you said it, because it's an important issue. So, does everyone want to hear one possible solution?
Everyone's looking for a solution, because so far, we've got ones that we don't have unanimity. We don't all agree on a solution.
I don't know if I have the complete solution, but I have something we can talk about, and we'll talk about a pilot program, and then we'll move forward. But Curtis Hancock and myself went out and measured the street. It's actually 29 feet from curb. We have about 28 foot of pavement. So, let's talk about traffic buttons, right? You can buy some four inch ceramic traffic buttons. They're very inexpensive. You get 100 in a box. Depending on the speed on the street, that's how far you space them out. Clearly, we don't want them, so why the cars can weave in and out? But just for a few cases, we could actually start putting these down along Wilson Street and do some kind of program. We can put in bike lanes, we can strive for that. But we can also have two 10 foot driving lanes, which will narrow those, like we talked about. The same thing, it's the same signs that have been used on Main Street, it's the same way we designed all of our street cross sections to be narrower for traffic calming, and this meets that intent. You still have a six to seven foot hike and bike lane, if you will, and we could do that if you like, if council decides, on all of those pedestrian corridors that we need to decide on. So, everything that runs north, south for an extended distance, you could try this out on. And then, if it works, we'll talk about capital improvements as we go forward. I'd also do it east to west, where there's not sidewalks, such as, like there are in Cedar, but there's not everywhere. So, I would have a certain number of pedestrian corridors, north and south, and then the same way. You would do Walnut, you would do Pine Street, you would do Chestnut, obviously. Farm Street would be another, Cedar would be another. And all of the other small streets don't get the considerable traffic. But if you start adding stop signs, and you start adding speed humps, things of that nature, all that does is move all the traffic that's on Wilson over to Main. And then, we'll do it there, then that moves the traffic over to Pecan. So, I think a long term solution to the plan is to do what we know works. If you realize, not everybody likes those bump outs, but everybody's driving slow on Main Street. What do you think?
Add MLK to your list.
But anywhere, there's an extended amount. What we'll need to decide is where the...
So, you're literally just doing a bump out, not a bike lane?
Yeah, I would add those tabs. You know, they're about four inches, they drive you crazy when you hit the bumps, you're going to pay attention to them. If we can't decide what side to put it on, I would suggest we do decide where there is a fire hydrant, so that parking is not happening in front of a fire hydrant anyway, you shouldn't be parking there anyhow. And mostly on our streets, it's on one side or the other. So, I would put the bike lanes or the bike and hike lanes, or whatever you want to call them, that seven foot pedestrian path, because that's what I heard those people asking for, was a safe place to ride their bike and their kids to walk down the street. There's not sidewalk in that location, but this gives them that, it's really inexpensive, it's a quick fix, and if it works and they like it, then we can talk about capital improvements.
I'm not, you know me, Trey, I'm visually challenged on these things. The little white dots are the little doobies you have up there, the lumps, right?
Correct.
And are you going to, are you creating three lanes?
That's correct. You would have two vehicular lanes that are 10 foot each, and then you would have a hike and bike lane, if you will. Go up one more, Colin, so Doc can see it. There you go. With the tabs all the way down Wilson, from Mesquite to Fisherman's Park, if you like.
And say if somebody had guests over, they could park in the bike lane?
You technically could not park in the bike lane. Matter of fact, you would lose a lot of street parking.
See, that's the problem.
Well, the question is, I think at a policy level, do you want to provide parking, or do we want to do something that's fiscally sustainable and it's narrow and we can maintain?
I want to make our people happy.
Me too.
And not slowing down the traffic and putting in a bike lane that takes away their parking are things that are not going to make them happy.
Why are you saying not slowing down the traffic? Because if they're driving in a narrower lane, they're going to slow down.
Sure, but you're taking away, you're putting in a bike lane. That's what I'm talking about. That's not going to make them happy either. So, you've got a rock and a hard place. You've got, we're not, we try to slow it down with the little bumps and the bike lane, then you've got them all upset, because there's a bike lane and it's cut down on street parking. So, you haven't cured anything with that solution. I love the little bumps. If we could figure out something else to do besides a bike lane with the bumps...
I think you could park, you can park on the opposite side of the street, technically. What the fire truck uses is an 18 to 20 foot clear lane, and they could achieve that, they would have to wheel over into the bike lane, if there was a ton of parking. I don't know what the parking situation is on Wilson, if they're all up and down the street. Go ahead, sorry.
Well, I have a question. I mean, I like the idea of little bumps, and I think if you lower, you know, the width of the road, of course, everybody's going to slow down. That's why they slow down on Main, because they can't tell if they're going to fit, so they're going to slow down. But is there a way to do it without calling it a bike lane, so people could park there? You know, maybe putting the bumps and make it a parking area, people would walk if there was no cars there. I'm just saying, figuring out a way to label it.
I think we need to do islands with the bumps, and any place that there's a fire hydrant, come out on both sides with bumps, and then you still have the parking, and it's kind of the opposite of a speed bump in the middle, have the dots come out as you would an island coming out on the road.
And this is just a cheap, quick fix. We could put bumps for an island, I would agree with that. That also takes away parking.
But it would only, I would only do it for 15 feet. I would, so I would have no bumps, leave the center lane where it is, so that there's parking on both sides, and randomly, maybe at midway of the block, come out with, like you were doing an island bump, as if you were going to put in a street light, and so it comes out four feet on each side, and it's 10 or 15, something that just makes you, and if you're going fast, you would hit those bumps anyway.
I think that's a great first step to see if it works. It may work and solve the problem for us, and we don't have to worry about it anymore. If it doesn't work, then we go from there, especially since these little doobies are cheap.
And we can, well, another solution, a long term solution is adding sidewalk. Gotcha. Okay, that's what I needed to see.
So, this is the street, and you just have bumps come out on both sides and just neck it down, and so, the yellow part would be solid bumps. This drawing's not to scale. The yellow part would be the solid bumps, and all it would do is just do a neck down, narrowing effect. You could throw some of those down in a two or three block and just see if it works, or we'll learn something if we try something out. And Tony probably has a configuration that makes sense, and I'd do, personally, I would vote for obnoxious yellow ones, not soothing white ones, because you're trying to get people's attention.
I will say that we're going to have to look at the entire street, you're right, because there's a hydrant every 500 feet, and then there's a block every 330.
Do it where it makes sense.
Right, so we'll have to go down and visually pick.
Anybody opposed to this being a possible try?
If you made them blue, that would show the fire hydrant, it's supposed to be the blue dots. I'm just saying, I'm just trying to figure out why the public's going, why is it yellow? Is there something wrong here? I'm just trying to figure out what they're thinking.
Councilmember Peterson?
I was just going to say, I think it's a good idea, because you can't call it a bike lane per se, so people can still park.
And if it's a complete disaster, you go pop up the buttons, and we come up with Plan B.
Does it meet all of our intended goals? So, it does, I agree, we'll sell the traffic. I'm not sure it helps with the, plays for the kids to ride their bike or...
The long term solution for that is the sidewalks. And maybe that's a, that streets have this, and then when we put the sidewalks, we pop up the buttons.
Sure.
And maybe you come out, and maybe you leave, you know, leave some distance between the lip of the gutter, and you don't have gutter everywhere, but maybe you don't go all the way to the edge of the pavement, so that if you are riding your bike, it's encouraging you to stay on the edge of the pavement and give you a safe spot.
So, do we want to come back and identify some pedestrian corridors, and then start a pilot program on everywhere? Or do we want to do this...
I do not want to start a pilot program everywhere. I want to pick a street to try to find out if it works at all.
Okay. Is there a solution for Wilson?
I'd like to see it on Wilson and Pecan, since that's where the...
I'd still say start with one street.
Okay.
But if you get a box, and it's like, look, the box does three on Wilson and one on Pecan, and you know, then we can do that. Colin, I'm counting on you, if Councilmember Jackson's wanting to say something, because I, yeah, there he is. Okay, Councilmember Jackson?
Right, although I'm a big proponent of bike lanes and, you know, pedestrian walking and everything, I would hope that we would, you know, I don't know how expensive these bumps and things are going to be, they probably aren't that expensive, but I'd rather really try to take some of that money and put it into sidewalks.
Okay, I appreciate that. I think Councilmember Ennis is saying the sidewalks won't slow the traffic, and that's the, I don't, I'm not sure sidewalks will fix the problem. Councilmember Ennis?
No, it won't solve the traffic, but it will increase the safety, and that's what I'm, my real concern is safety.
Agreed.
And we've identified that speeding's not an issue, but the feeling of not being safe is the issue.
That's correct. And if it gets them to slow down, and it turns the 85th percentile into 28 miles an hour, it's going to help.
Sure.
Well, in my neighborhood, we have sidewalks on both sides of the street, and people are still upset about the speed. So, to Councilman Jackson's point, we have, the issue separates out. There's some parts of town without sidewalks, and that's extremely dangerous with the street. And then, there's parts of town with sidewalks on both sides, and people still don't feel safe, so...
Sure. Well, and once we identify those corridors, and if we do follow our current cross-section, you would have the bump outs for the parking. It would be just like Main, eventually. And you would have a narrower lane that still allowed the parking and slowed everybody down.
So pick some corridors, buy, buy a box or two, and if, you know, to Councilmember Ennis's point, if, if we want to do it between Cedar and Beech, or, you know, if there's a couple of blocks, and you want to do it on two corridors within that couple of blocks, do, do what makes engineering sense. And let's try it out for a little while. Council, or is everybody?
We'll get that. We'll put a speed study, see if it makes a difference.
Okay. All right. Councilmember Jackson, you okay with do a little prototype, let staff use their judgment?
Yeah, if we're taking into consideration the usage of the streets and the, you know, the pedestrian walkway, sure.
Great. Okay, council, how are we doing? It is 7:58. Can we keep rocking and rolling? No one's saying no, so we'll keep rocking and rolling. 9C, discuss developing a plan for the rodeo arena at Mayfest Park. Mr. Jobe?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I think the staff report was fairly thorough.
Yep.
That was just giving you a history. Basically, the lease that we currently have is gonna, it's over in June. So I think we should let that expire. But we need to also talk about what we want to do with the rodeo arena in the future. So we've, we've talked about in the past what we've done. They came to us in 2015. We actually did some improvements. We took over the maintenance. Now that's expired. There are no, nothing tied to the arena at all. We did quite a bit of work to get this master concept plan together, but then it just stalled, because it was undecided what we wanted to do. I would suggest you let me bring back something at the end of June with several ideas of what Mayfest could be, including a rodeo, or something additional. And then we have a bigger conversation, what that looks like, and what we want it to be when it grows up. And then we'll come back. And once that decision is made by the council, by the public, then we truly talk about how we market it and things of that nature.
And an RFP, if we need one?
An RFP, that's correct. If we need one. If not, and we decide that we want it to be the little rodeo arena, it's always been. We haven't lost anything but a month, and we can go back and still do an RFP for services.
The only comment I have is that we need to make sure that we add to the drawing where the county shelter's gonna be, because that's gonna change the
It's right here in the corner.
So I, I'm not sure if everybody on council knew where that building's gonna be, and where the parking lot's gonna be. Councilmember Ennis, did you know that? Are you, you with us? Okay. Councilmember Jackson, okay, you might look at the map in the packet, because it'll show you where the county shelter is.
Now, that being said, the parking lot configuration for the county shelter?
Has changed.
Has changed. It is not quite as big. So everything that was inside of, and if you look on there, you can see the lines for the
Pipe easement.
Pipeline easement, that is no longer going to be concrete. So you're losing that much parking to the east. But other than that, this is a pretty good depiction of what it could look like.
I just want us to have that in mind, that there'll be an additional building there and the use of, involved with that building.
I talked to one of our Main Street employees today, Ms. Sarah, and there's quite a bit of ideas that she's talking about, as one of our interns. So she's got some great ideas. We're gonna bring them back to you next week, but we wanted to clean them up, make sure they were right before we did.
You said next week, you mean next meeting?
I'm sorry, the next meeting, yes.
Thank you.
Actually, I'd like to be the last meeting in June, that'd be better.
Yeah.
I hope that you will include Councilwoman Rogers in the, some of this, because she's Ms. Rodeo Arena at this point.
Sure.
And I know that Visit Bastrop, have you not told me, Ms. Rogers, that Visit Bastrop is licking their chops over the possibility of marketing it, so?
I've actually spoken, Susan and I had spoken before this. We knew this was coming up. And that's what I want to bring to you at the next meeting, but it's a possibility that this could be one of many events, or event venues, that's marketed by Visit Bastrop, just like they, they can do it here, they could do Fisherman's Park, they could do any of the parks, so on and so forth. But that may be the kind of things that we would talk about at the next meeting. Go ahead, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Ennis. Actually, Trey is doing exactly what I, what I was requesting the city to look at, is whatever they're, I just want to utilize that, that space that the city has, whether they turn it into a
Food trucks.
Not a scene, but
It could be that, it could be anything.
I mean, I'm just saying that I just, I hated it just sitting there, except for a couple of times a year. I mean, the city spends its time to maintenance it and things, and it's such a park, and something, it's an asset, and you never want to unutilize an asset that we have. So Trey's, Trey's on, on track, bringing back some other ideas. And I'm glad he spoke with Susan, because she was pretty excited about getting something done about it. So thank you. I'm looking forward to seeing what other ideas you'll bring back.
Sure. Anything else?
No. Good job.
Thank you.
Excellent. All right, moving on to 9D, Ms. Waldron. Receive presentation on the unaudited monthly financial report for the period ending April 30. Full of a lot of good news, aren't you?
Good evening. Well, it's, it's not too bad. Not too bad. I will, I will hit the highlights. So we do have a few funds under warning, and I will talk to the, talk of those as we go along. Economic indicators are all down, and I think we all expected that to be the case. General Fund, oh, sorry. He's bumped there. All right. So under revenues, we do have a few funds. The Vehicle Equipment and Replacement Fund is behind its forecast, because we did not make a transfer in April. And so that's one we're looking at. We'll come back later on when we have some more sales tax months behind us, and make that determination whether we want to make that transfer or not. So that is why that one is red. The Electric is just running a little behind the forecasted revenues. The Hot Fund Tax is obviously, we'll cover that in more detail, but it is running behind our forecast. And the Cemetery is running a little behind forecast.
Ms. Waldron?
Yes.
Should we not start forecasting lower on Cemetery? It looks like we continue to go.
Well, I actually, my staff sold nine lots last week, so I don't, I'm not quite ready to throw in the towel on the forecast, but yes, we are behind where we projected.
Well, I know the last year we were too, and I think the year before that, so.
I'll certainly be more conservative as I lay out 2021's budget.
Great, thanks.
Yes. General Fund is positive overall. Sales Tax is almost exactly break even as of April. Property Tax, I have added some notes on the property tax. We did receive the 2019 supplemental report when we received the 2020 preliminary report. And after going back and looking at this report compared to the certified roll that they gave us last July, it was significantly lower, which may explain why we're running below our forecast.
Which means they gave you a certified roll, and then people protested, and they may have agreed to the protest?
Well, one of the things is, when they give us the certified roll, they also give us what is still under review, and we take 80% of what's under review, which has usually been a very safe number.
Mm-hmm.
Last year, they had a lot still under review. So apparently, my 80% was not conservative enough, because that number drastically changed from one year to the next. So that's why I'm speaking. Normally, we would collect 99% of what we forecasted. This year, I don't see that that is actually going to happen, but it's because our forecast was based on, yes. So that's just a note I added on that particular. I am still seeing deposits coming in almost every day, but we're, we're certainly not going to meet the shortfall of 96,000. Water and wastewater overall is doing very strong, and their revenue is up almost 4% over forecast. The Electric Fund is positive, and as I stated before, their revenue is running just slightly behind forecast. And I do have some notes in there. We did receive a credit from LCR, which we are now passing on to our customers, so that is part of that shortfall. The Hot Fund overall is behind. I want to note that we did make a Visit Bastrop payment in April, but we are not talking about making one in July. So I do feel like this fund will start coming back a little bit. It's not going to be up to forecast, but I think the, the gap will, will close over the next several months. And of course, April is our first really big hit, as far as the hot tax goes. We did see a shortfall of forecast of $170,000. The majority of that is the Hyatt. And that's all I have in detail. If you have any questions for me?
Councilmember Rogers?
I just wanted to say, every question I came up with, after I read your little notes at the bottom, I didn't have any more questions.
Good. That makes Ms. Waldron very happy. Good, good job.
And the Hyatt is coming back on board June 1? Is that still the case?
I, that is the last I heard.
That, they, being open and being booked is two different things.
Right.
I think they're gonna gradually open.
Gotcha. But at least it's something.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Waldron. I can't see Doc, but I think, no questions, right, Colin? You okay with the audit? Okay, he gave you a thumbs up, Ms. Waldron. That's as good as it gets. 9E, receive presentation on grant application for the Texas State Library and Archives Commission CARES Grant. Is Ms. Sexton online?
I'm here.
Hi. There you are. Yay. Okay, you're on.
Great. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am here with just a quick presentation tonight. No official action needed from you. This grant does not require matching funds, but I, of course, just wanted to keep you up to date on what's going on over at the library when it comes to technology and grant applications. So the Texas State Library is distributing CARES funding to public libraries, so that, those grants can be for library initiatives that support prevention, preparation, and response to the COVID-19 emergency. The library is going to request $7,902 in funding to implement both contactless self-checkout and touchless self-checkout for our patrons. The contactless means there will be a CPU sitting there. Patrons can scan their own items, check them out, get their receipt, be good to go. Touchless is a new fancy thing I only just learned exists, where patrons will be able to download an app, turn their own mobile device into the barcode scanner and the library catalog and everything else, and check out their materials that way. So they won't even have to use shared touch surfaces. So we can help our community reduce their risk as they access our materials.
Ms. Sexton, you and your staff have done a fabulous job. Just cannot say enough good things. And while I'm visiting with you, we know that the Chair of our Board is in rehab and recovering, and she had a fall, and she's rehabbing back. But if everybody would remember Mary Jo Jenkins, the library board is sad that she had a fall, but the Board, the staff, the volunteers, you have just done a fabulous job. And I'm very impressed with how you started the reopening, and you know, we shot a video there, and there were folks just constantly using it. And the fee, all of, of the complaints that I get, they are never about the library. Just hats off to you and your team.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate that. Yeah, I'm, I'm really proud of the work the team is doing.
Councilmember Jackson?
Right. I want to echo that, because I've heard nothing but good things, you know, other areas that are trying to do things in their libraries aren't having the success that our library is having. So I, my hat's off, my hat is off to you for doing the things that you're doing, especially with the curbside checkout and all the other things that you instituted. Other areas just aren't doing that. And they're looking to Bastrop for leadership, and I'm so glad that we had that leadership in you and your staff. So thank you.
Thank you.
Great job, Ms. Sexton. Thank you so much. Good luck with the grant.
Thank you.
Okay. And I have had a request for a break. It is 8:12, and we'll take a five-minute bio break. 8:12, we're in recess. Okay, it is 8:17, and we are back in regular session. And I apologize to the consultant that we have online. Council, we are going to Item 12D for Ms. Waldron. Item 12D, Items for Individual Consideration. Consider action to approve ordinance number 2020-13 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, authorizing the issuance of City of Bastrop, Texas General Obligation Refunding Bond, Series 2020, levying an ad valorem tax in support of the bond, awarding the sale of the bond, approving a paying agent registrar agreement, and an escrow agreement, calling certain obligations for redemption, and authorizing other matters related to the issuance of the bond. Hi.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Dan Wake Miller with Specialized Public Finance. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Wonderful. Well, thank you all for taking this item up. As you did back in April, you authorized us to move forward with looking at a potential refinancing of your Series 2010 issues, three different issues. Within that Series 2010, there was roughly 2.4 million in bonds that carried interest rates anywhere from the mid-3% range up to 4%. Today, we received bids from banks just on a direct placement. They're putting their bids in based on the financial information from your CAFERS, from your budget. And we received eight good bids. I believe, I don't know if it made it into your packet or presentation today, just because the banks require, really up until today, to submit their bids, to be most current and with some of the volatility in the market.
It's not in the packet.
The great news is, back in April, this had an estimated savings of just under $70,000, spread out between fiscal '20 and '21. Today, we bring to you a bid from Citizens National Bank of 1.074% for the, these issues to be refunded. So taking it from 3.65% down to 4%, down to 1.07%. That produces a savings of just over $74,000 to be spread in fiscal '20 through '24, primarily in fiscal '20 and '21 is where you see the savings. Again, 1% money is, is pretty cheap. And this is a great opportunity. There's no extension of this debt. It's just matching the term. That was outstanding. It's taking advantage of the lower interest rates, and the savings are net of the cost associated with completing this transaction. So that is just a summary of what we received today, the eight bids, with Citizens National Bank being the low bid.
Mr. Wake Miller, I fully expect a race by council to move for approval.
I move to approve.
I've got a motion from Councilmember Rogers, and a second from Councilmember Jackson. Is that where we, yes, okay. Is there any other questions from council for staff? Any discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Jack, Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Thank you both so very much. Yay. And feel free to come back anytime and save our citizens that kind of money. We are very happy to do that. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm sorry that I could have called you earlier. I didn't, I didn't know. All right, council, we're going to go back to page two, and we are at citizens' comments. And I have a number of comments. We appreciate our citizens participating in the process. The first comment is from Megan Madeir, I think I'm saying that right, 602 Jessica Place. And her comment is as follows, keeping our children and pets safe on Hassler Shores. Speed bumps. There are more reasons to have them than not to. It's, it's a no-outlet road leading to a park within a subdivision, and the kicker, one of the main crosswalks for children walking home from the intermediate school. I have so much to say on this matter, and we'll pursue as many signatures and start a community-wide petition if that's what you need. We have discussed this on the neighborhood page for years, and it's time something is done. I have lived on this corner for five years, watching people fly by, putting cones, slow down flags and such, and nothing slows them down. Me and my children watched our cat get run down last weekend. I'm scared to even let my three girls play in my yard. So are four other families who live on this corner with three kids in each home. There are a total of 12 kids in those first four houses, and we all fear for our children outside because of the speeders, blatant disre- blatant disregard for the families who walk their pets or let their children play outside. I have many more points. The new gem that has brought a lot of new joggers on this road. Our community has discussed this for years, and I think it's time something is done before the new school year. It is the time to do it. What's the price of concrete compared to our children's safety? The next set of comments, and I believe that they are nine, all have to do with the dog park. And I'm reading them in Citizens Comments because that's where they've submitted them. And we will be going to Item 12A, and we'll talk about the dog park when we talk about COVID. So I'm just letting everybody know that process. The first comment is from James Travis Curtis at 3950 Highway 71 East, Apartment 328. In light of the reduction of COVID-19 restrictions presented by Governor Abbott, I propose you reopen the Bark Park. We are just one of the many that would benefit from having a space where our dogs can run free because we live in an apartment. Our dog cannot socialize with others of his kind, nor burn off all the energy needed. We understand the necessity of social distancing and wearing a mask. Thank you for your consideration. The next comment is from Paula Pratter at 3950 Highway 71 East, Apartment 328. During this unusual time, we all strive daily to balance our physical health and our mental health. For my mental health, taking my dog to the Bark Park, standing under the giant oaks and watching my dog run with joy is good for my soul. We all need to get outside for a while and enjoy nature. I feel the risk of going to any park can be minimized by using disinfecting wipes, wearing a mask, and maintaining social distancing. Please consider reopening the Bark Park and all our parks so that everyone can enjoy the beauty of Bastrop and Lost Pines area. Thank you for your time and consideration. Next comment is from Jean, and I believe it's Ganson, and I apologize if I'm not doing that correctly, at 133 Greens Creek Cove. I'm not familiar with that street, and there's no city, so I don't know what city that is. And that may be one of the new streets. I apologize. I don't, I just don't recognize that name. Please open the Bark Park. I am okay with you limiting the amount of people in the park, making time limits for us, and if we have to wear gloves. These pups need to socialize and run for their mental health. The next comment is from Robert, Robert Miesian Jr., 122 McLeod Cedar Creek, Texas. Please consider opening the dog park once more. It is time, and there is enough distance in the park for it to be safe. The next comment. Madam Secretary, you're marking them off so I don't forget anybody, right? Okay. The next comment's from Kevin Broderick, 135 Chapel Hill Road. Please consider reopening the dog park just as you have Big Fisherman Park. I don't think the dogs are a real health problem, and signs could place requiring adequate spacing for people and only a limited number of people, not dogs, since some have several at one time. I might suggest eight or so. Thank you for your time, KB. The next item is from Jennifer Franks. I come again at 1242 Highway 71 West. I come again respectfully asking for the Bark Park to be open. As I have stated before, the regular members are roughly 10 to 15 individuals who come at staggered times due to our own work or personal schedules. We were already complying with social distancing and will happily continue to do so. If you were to instruct us to bring sanitizing wipes, I can assure you we would take whatever measures you impose very seriously. In stark contrast to the lackadaisical ways the general public only halfway complies with your suggestions. The CDC completely contradicts itself on many suggestions for stopping the spread of COVID-19. We know there is one suggestion that dogs be kept socially distanced. Then we have this statement. The vi, quote, "The virus that causes COVID-19 spreads mainly from person to person through respiratory droplets from coughing, sneezing, and talking. Recent studies show that people who are infected do not have symptoms, likely also play a role in the spread of COVID-19. At this time, there is no evidence that animals play a significant role in spreading the virus that causes COVID-19. Based on the limited information available, the risk of animals spreading COVID-19 to people is considered to be low. In other words, people are the risk, not the animals. Please use some common sense interpretation of this. Dogs playing together in an outdoor setting with fresh air surrounding us, owners socially distanced, and perhaps a limit on the number of people you would allow on each side of the park, makes far more sense than being crammed in a grocery store surrounded by people not social distancing, who are touching a half dozen or more things without buying them, breathing the same air in a closed building. I urge you to consider the safety and risk factors here. Dog parks are as close to no risk as I can think of. Same goes for any outdoor park, which you have already opened. The risk of transmission is low in these situations compared to the known high-risk enclosed spaces such as stores, restaurants, factories, businesses, et cetera. Thank you for your time. I hope you will do what your citizens are asking of you and allow us to make the decision we feel is in our own best interest." This comment is from Robin Schneider, 289 Pecan Acres Road. It is past time to open the dog park. If Fisherman's Park is open, the dog park needs to be open. If we need to limit capacity, that's fine. But if the only reason the dog park is being closed is because one dog, not even one dog in Texas, tested positive for C-19, well, that's not a good reason to keep our own small dog park closed. I honestly can't think of any reason to keep it closed, especially not if other parks are open. The dog park is a wonderful little treasure, and I know many of us miss the opportunity to socialize and exercise our dogs. Madam Secretary, did I get all the citizen comments?
Did you get Megan Madeir?
Yep, that was the first one. Okay, all right. That is the end of Citizen Comments. We're moving on to the next page, Consent Agenda. There's only one item for the Consent Agenda. Item 11A, Consider Action to Approve City Council Minutes from May 12th Regular Meeting and May 18th Special Called Meeting.
Madam Mayor, I have what might be a correction on minutes from May 12th. Should we pull that, or can we just do that?
Is it a typo?
Could be. Yeah, probably.
You want to say what it is?
It's Consent Agenda. A motion was made by Councilmember Anis to approve Item 8A as listed on the Consent Agenda. I think it's 10A.
Okay, that, that's a, that can be typo that she can correct.
That's, that's it.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Sir.
I have a motion from Councilmember Anis and a second from Mayor Pro Tim Nelson. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Anis?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. The motion passes unanimously. We're moving on to Items for Individual Consideration. The first item is Item 12A. Consider and Adopt on First and Final Reading Ordinance Number 2020-14 as an emergency measure ratifying temporary emergency orders enacted by the mayor in her capacity as Emergency Management Director in regard to the current local state of disaster for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, and safety. I have several items that I want to talk about. The first is to tell you that I have signed no emergency orders since we spoke last. I am working and talking with both the city manager and the assistant city manager. And as we feel comfortable and they get things in place, we may be coming back to you. I may, we'll, we'll give you heads-up notice on when we think we're ready to open buildings to the public and if there's any major changes that we need to make. But right now, with the orders that we have in place, I have not signed anything, and I'm happy to consider anything that you guys want to consider tonight. The other, these are just two informational items. Get all my, I've got two lists going here. Just reminding the general public that we are in Phase 2 of Governor Abbott's Open Texas. That started on Friday. That allows restaurants to be at 50% capacity and bars to be at 25% capacity. So that's controlled by the governor, just letting everybody know that we've moved into Phase 2. On the Bastrop status, a couple of informational items that I want to give you is, number one, the Board and Commission meetings, task force meetings, and that sort of thing. I had signed a directive, and you guys had confirmed it, that those were all canceled unless the city manager wrote the, wrote a notice. And we have done that on a number of occasions. We've done that for planning and zoning meetings and Economic Development Corporation meetings. There are several of our boards that are getting to the point that they need to meet. And I have, this is not a directive, but a direction that I, I believe you guys will be okay with. And if you want to amend it at all, we can. But what I have told the city manager is that the Chair of any Board, the Staff Liaison, and the Council Liaison should work together to determine if they need, if there needs to be a meeting. And if they decide they need a meeting, then the city manager will sign off on it and we'll get it scheduled. I know that the Main Street Board has already had a couple of meetings, and they do every one virtual. So they're not in chambers. They're not having to stream anything. I think they've had maybe one meeting. I said several, and it may have only been one. Their council liaison's looking at me with a blank face. So, heads, heads up, Ms. Gleason. Make sure you always include your council liaison. But those, the, I've told the city manager, those are the three people. The Chair, the Staff Liaison, and the Council Liaison need to be aware of discussions of meetings and make the decision together of whether or not there needs to be a meeting. We don't stream all of the meetings, but folks can, they can each have a table. We can make sure we do social distancing, and we can also give any of the Board members the option of doing virtual. But there's, there's, it's been two or three months, and there's just, we're to the point that there's some business that needs to be taken care of. Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
I think, I think.
Councilmember Brunnus?
It wasn't about this. It's about something else. So if we want to finish, the Boards and Commissions.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I completely agree. I think this is, this is an opportunity for us to engage our community activists in that area without taking away from, from staff's needs and desires relative to the demands on their time. So I, I think that's a wonderful idea.
Okay, so that doesn't require any change? That's just a, kind of an administrative thing that they'll be doing. But if you are the liaison for a meeting, and you think you have items for the agenda or whatever, and I know, Council, that you would already be doing this, but make sure that you reach out to your staff liaison and your Chair and start those conversations. We are also, as a decision that was made long ago that we're, won't require an emergency directive, but we are going to start, we are allowing events permits starting July 15th. That doesn't mean that every event's approved. It means that they will be reviewed from both Public Health and Safety, from a COVID thing. So it's the idea of, one of them that's being discussed is like the Corvette Invasion, where it's cars in a parking lot at the convention center. So it, if you've got, if there's an event that you think you can do safely, they, you can reach out like you would normally for an event permit, and they will be reviewed on a case-by-case basis. Prior to that, we had just said, like, no. We, we don't have time, so that's, is that making sense? Case by case, let us know if you want to do something. So then, from a Bastrop County standpoint, I want to let you know that at 11:00 a.m. this morning, we had 173 cases. At 3:00 p.m. this afternoon, we had 182 cases. We went up nine cases today. And one of the reasons I wanted to bring this to your attention, there is a tremendous amount of information available on the Bastrop County Emergency Management website and also on the state health website. They've got all kinds of trends. But we put in 44 cases from the Friday before to last Friday. And that was the highest single increase that we had seen in any week since this started. Some of you may remember, some of you may not. When we met two weeks ago, we were at 116 cases. So at our last council meeting, we were at 116. We sit here tonight at 182. One, some of the information that is available is you can see who's in the city limits. And for the City of Bastrop, we are currently at four. But you can also see a 78602 ZIP code that is not in the Incorporated City, and that is at 24. We are the only, I gotta be careful. I think in both Smithville and Elgin, the cases inside the city are higher than the ZIP code of the Incorporated area outside of the city. So it's just kind of an interesting, interesting thing. And you can, it's public information. You can see where all of those cases are. The nursing home testing will be done by the state and as mandated by the governor. And Chief Rosales is working as hard as he can to get that all resolved. But I can't tell you guys the absolute date that that's going to happen. That's something that's really kind of out of our control. Then the last item to, for, for me to talk about, to talk with you guys is, I don't know if I'm the only one getting the dog park emails. They're, they are certainly a strong faction of people with very strong opinions. One of them shared with me that there were four other cities that had opened their dog parks, and that was a reason that we should open ours. And I think it's important that you know that at College Station, their dog park that was sent to me as an example is 1.5 acres. And one of the requirements of opening the dog park is that all dogs are required to maintain social distance from other dogs. Well, and you do that by keeping them on a leash. Plano has opened their dog park. They are five acres. Frisco has opened their dog park. They are 2.5 acres. Katy has opened their dog park. They are 14 acres. They are saying no access to restrooms, no benches. No, they don't want anybody sitting down anywhere, and no dog washing stations. Houston, Fort Worth, many other cities also remain closed. For Bastrop, and I asked staff for this information, and I was very grateful to get it. Our dog park for the area for the small dogs is 18,100 square feet. The area for the large dogs is 24,000 square feet. So that's about .4 acres for the small and .5 acres for the large. We are just under an acre for, for the entire dog park. On the CDC guidelines, they are still saying, as of 11:27 a.m. this morning, what to do if you own pets. It says, number one, do not let pets interact with people or other animals outside the household. On number three, it says something about keeping cats indoors, which isn't relevant to this discussion. The third bullet point says walk dogs on a leash and maintain at least six feet from other people and animals. And the fourth bullet point says avoid dog parks or public places where a large number of people gather. So in the Katy, we, they are also limiting the hours. And I think that was the last of it. I did get a request, one of the requests that I got to open the dog park said, if we open it, do not limit the hours because we, we all like to come at different hours. And if you're gonna limit it, limit the hours, it defeats the purpose of opening the dog park. I don't know of any staff we have available to monitor the number of people at the dog park. So that is, that's one concern that I have. So I, I understand that there's many people that want it open, and I am open to discussion or suggestions if anyone would like to take actions.
Well, I'm a proponent of opening it, but you, you hit the nail on the head. My feeling is that if we open it, we impose restrictions. Like, was it Katy where they had to be, the dogs have to be on a leash and, and everybody needs to be socially distanced? There, we get to who's gonna monitor that. Unless the city manager has some major brilliant idea.
The one other thing that I would like to mention is that, just to make Council aware, the dog park was vandalized. The locking mechanism was broken. And so that locking mechanism has been repaired. And because when it was broken, the way that we took care of that is it's chained now. It's, it's got a chain and a lock wrapped around it. But I, I did want, want you to make aware of it. There, I've gotten several comments of like, well, it's right across from the. There, I've gotten several comments of like, well, it's right across from the police department, nobody would ever do anything. Well, the police are not lined up with their noses on the window looking at the dog park. They're, they're in the back of the building doing police work. So I appreciate the, the location, but I would let you know that it, we've had vandalization since our last council meeting. Councilmember Ennis, do you, where, where, so you would like to open it with restrictions of a dog, of the dogs being on a leash?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Well, I, I just have a, a little bit of a suggestion. I know that it's chained up with, I guess, a padlock on it of sorts. And I don't know if everybody's been in a gas station or a, a convenience store where you have to go get the key to the bathroom? Wondering if, cause there is, if you go into the police department, there's somebody there at the desk. Wonder if they could go in, get the key, then, I don't know, something, that way you'd have one person in, but somebody, that, that person's already at the desk, so it's not a new personnel. And it's still only be one person at a time. I mean, it wouldn't help with them socializing with other of the dogs, but it would, might give them access to something if they have nowhere else to take their dog.
The, the comments that I saw tonight that concerned me, cause I, I was reading them fresh, is that the goal seems to be for the dogs to socialize and that's what the CDC is saying.
I understand, I'm just saying, here's, here's an option.
So I, I think.
You wouldn't be able to socialize with other dogs, but your dog would be able to get out of the house.
So you, you're, you're suggesting that then we only allow one person to have the key and they, how do we keep other people from?
I don't know, I'm just, just a suggestion.
I'm, I'm afraid that, uh, our, our dog park folks want it to revert back to exactly how it was before COVID, we even knew what COVID was. And I don't know if, I'm, here I'm sitting down here and saying, let's open it up with restrictions. I think those restrictions are, may be so insulting to them that, you know, it, it won't do us any good.
Well, I do want to make sure that everyone knows that you, you can put your dog on a leash and you can walk on every trail in every park, you can walk on any sidewalk in the city, you can take your dog to a friend's house with a, with a fence. I mean, if you're, we're, we are not mandating social distancing on private property. So, um, I, I did get a call from one person and I said, do, do you have a friend with a backyard? And she said, yeah, I've been, I'm, I'm starting to look at that. So, um, I, it's not that I'm not sensitive and I have also, my understanding is there is at least one apartment complex that has a dog park and that dog park is open at that apartment complex. So, um, there's, there's just a lot of factors.
Well, I will say this, that, uh, the emails that say that our dogs need socialization is a, is a, AKA, we need socialization. It's, you know, most of the people, and I've, I've heard a lot about this issue and I've had, everywhere I go, I get hit over the head with it. And that is that they miss, the, uh, the humans miss the socializing is the bottom line. And, uh, it's basically what we're trying to prohibit, yeah, at least six feet away from each other. So, I guess I'm speaking out of both sides of my mouth. I want to solve this problem for my neighbors and friends, but, um.
Do you have a fenced backyard? Maybe you can really solve this problem.
Oh, I solved it at some point. I recommended that they all, that some of them congregated a neighbors down the street and they've been doing that. And they've been making it an, uh, a evening deal of drinking wine and having their, their, they bring their dogs, but that's not the same thing.
I, I might have a different suggestion, maybe not the dog park, but maybe the animal shelter has an area that they can open up maybe once a week that somebody could come out and make an appointment for their dog to be able to run off a leash. I'm sure they have a big area that they allow dogs to run.
This is the important part where we make sure everyone watching knows that the city of Bastrop does not run the animal shelter.
Oh, I understand, I'm just saying it's an option out to them, maybe they can reach out to them and see if there's something, oh, I understood, I wasn't meaning, we could, but since it's a county ran thing, see if they have something that they can, maybe they can do it for a fee and make some money.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, Mayor, this is, this is another difficult one, but, uh, I'd feel more comfortable by staying with the CDC guidelines.
I didn't hear the last part, staying with the.
He said it's a difficult decision, but he feels more comfortable staying with the CDC guidelines.
Well, the governor, uh, I've heard governors all over the country say, um, you know, I'm staying with the statistics and the CDC, so you can't argue with that.
I, I don't need a motion unless somebody wants to open the dog parks. All right, we are done with twelve A, moving on to twelve B. Consider action to approve resolution number R twenty twenty dash forty-two of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, amending resolution number twenty twenty dash sixteen, approving the Bastrop Police Department to apply for a grant for a major critical scene lighting system, authorizing the interim chief of police as the grantees authorized official, providing for severability clause and establishing an effective date. This is probably the easiest one you've ever done.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Council. So I just need to clarify some language. If you recall back in February, the, uh, resolution was approved to apply for the grant, it was just under eleven thousand dollars. And the language to be clarified is I had originally, uh, said it goes back to the CapCog.
Um, get closer to the mic. Councilmember Jackson's having a hard time hearing you.
All right. Do I need to start over, Councilman Jackson?
He, he can hear you now, keep going, he's, he's got the item.
So rather than, uh, if we were default, it go back to the CapCog Department of Justice, it has to go back to the Department of Justice Officer of, Office of the Governor Criminal Justice Grant. So I went ahead and clarified that, you might have saw some red lines in some of the packets.
So it's a complete change in words to make it be right?
That's right. Yep, six words.
I move to approve.
Yes, and I think we are on the.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Rogers and a second from Councilmember Peterson. Do you have any other questions for Chief Nagy?
A comment, Madam Mayor.
Mayor Pro Tem Nelson?
When the notice of, uh, funding, of this funding opportunity came out and the proposal that was written up by, by our police department led by Chief Nagy was well received at CapCog and was one of the top rated projects out there, so I wanted, I want to make sure that you get recognition for that.
Thank you very much. I think we're on the shortlist, I'm hopeful.
Yay.
You are on the shortlist. We, we voted on that last week.
Excellent.
Helps to have the connection.
Insider information.
There you go.
I'll take it.
Um, I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Nelson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. We're moving on to twelve C. Consider action to approve resolution number R twenty twenty dash forty-three of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving the Bastrop Police Department to apply for a grant for a decontamination shelter and hazmat suits, authorizing the interim chief of police as the grantees authorized official, providing for a severability clause and establishing an effective date. Chief Nagy?
That is correct. All right, so we are asking for, uh, a decontamination shelter, that's gonna be what's on your left, it's basically a three lane. You walk in one part, uh, you disrobe, you walk in the middle part, it went ahead and showers you off, you walk into the third part and you go ahead and get dressed. So we can, at three persons at a time, even including persons, uh, with, um, that might be in a wheelchair through the center lane, we can really help that out. And then also, we're asking for twelve complete, um, uh, decon suits and that's about, also about nine hundred dollars as well, so that's all gonna be added into that sixteen thousand one hundred twenty-eight dollars. And the great thing is, is that Sergeant McManus and Chief Rosales and myself are pro-board certified, so we can teach people how to wear those suits, that's not an extra cost. And then this is, there's no matching funds from the city as well.
Excellent job.
Move to approve.
Move for approval.
I have a motion from Councilmember Jackson and a second from Mayor Pro Tem, because I think he said it and it was coming in like, so Nelson and Jackson, is there any further discussion or questions or comments? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Good job, Chief Nagy, thank you and good luck on that. Uh, we've already taken care of twelve D. Moving on to twelve E. Consider action to approve resolution number R twenty twenty dash forty-five of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, authorizing payment for overhead and underground electric distribution facilities for the city of Bastrop's State Highway twenty elevated storage tank site to Bluebonnet Electric in the amount of seventy thousand eight hundred ninety-five dollars and thirty-four cents. Authorizing the city manager to execute any and all necessary documents, providing for a severability clause and establishing an effective date. Mr. Jobe?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Ooh, that's a little taller than me. Um, so what you have here before you tonight is pretty simple. You read off the amount, seventy thousand dollars, it's time to connect the electricity to the tank or at least to the transformer. Um, it's gonna be seventy thousand bucks, we're ready to go. We've got the easement in place, that's to get it to the property. And now, uh, Mr. Wood will have to execute the easement and this will all be funded through our impact fees. So, any questions?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Peterson and a second from Councilmember Ennis. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. It's a good idea to finish the project we started, so that's a good thing. All right, we're moving on to item twelve F. Consider an action to approve funding for the city's share of the Capitol Area Council of Governments Air Quality Program for fiscal twenty twenty-one. I understand it's CapCog's fiftieth anniversary. Mayor Pro Tem Nelson?
Yeah.
Mr. Wood?
So, this is a program the city has participated in the past, uh, that CapCog puts together to try to look at air quality for the region, since the air doesn't tend to stay in one city or one county. And so they, uh, have had this program for a while, they're actually lowering the amount of money, uh, that they're asking for from us. It's a, a very small sum of money, I think it's well worth it. Mayor Pro Tem Nelson knows even more about the program than I do, so if anyone has any questions, we can try to answer those.
Do you have any comments you'd like to make, Mayor Pro Tem Nelson?
Well, you know, this is a validly important program. Several years ago, the state reduced the amount of funding that they were given to communities to help mitigate air quality issues and there, and the Capitol area is, is the largest area in the state that is not under, not in a non-attainment, uh, area. This is merely an educational process and an informational process that, that allows our community to know what practices they can, they can undertake to, to ensure quality air in our region. And for a five hundred and sixty-eight dollar investment, I think it's money well spent.
Yes.
Is that a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Uh, motion from Mayor Pro Tem Nelson and second from Councilmember Peterson. Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously and I, it's a moment that I want to take real quickly to thank Mayor Pro Tem Nelson for all of the work that he does for us on CapCog. It's very, very helpful to the community that he keeps up with all that. Thank you for serving. All right, we're moving to our last item for individual consideration. Consider action to approve resolution number R twenty twenty dash forty-six of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, confirming a board appointment of the mayor is required in section three point oh eight of the city's charter and establishing an effective date. Council, you'll see that Jimmy Cottle, I don't know anyone in Bastrop that does not know who Jimmy Cottle is, has, um, filled out an application to serve on the cemetery board. Unfortunately, we had an opening, you'll remember that, uh, Ms. Beck passed away several months ago, and so this is to fill her place. I don't know of any other mayor in the state of Texas that gets an application from a fifty-year licensed funeral director who has dug graves by hands and machines, sold property for the same cemetery and performed all phases of cemetery work. His qualifications go without saying anything else. He also serves as a chaplain for our police department, he's served on the library board, he's a phenomenal man, I was thrilled to get his application and, um, the, Madam Secretary and I kind of got a giggle out of this, he dropped it off and within two hours, he was on the agenda. So this, this application's fresh and new. Statistics that I always give you guys, I had been at fifty-fifty on my gender between male and female, but I'm now at an odd number, so I'm fifty-one percent male and forty-nine percent female on my appointments this year. And, um, new to boards, never having served on a board before is thirty-eight percent, appointed to a different board is fourteen percent and reappointed to boards is forty-nine percent. From a, um, location standpoint, forty-three percent of the people serving on, that I have appointed, uh, live in the downtown area, forty-one percent live inside the city and not in the downtown, historic downtown area, and sixteen percent live in the ETJ. With that, I would request your approval of Mr. Cottle.
Move to approve.
Move for approval.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Ennis and a second from Councilmember Jackson. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you, Council, the motion passes unanimously and let's have a round of applause for Mr. Cottle. All right, we are moving into our second session of executive session to discuss two items. Item thirteen A pursuant to the Texas Government Code, section five-five-one-point-oh-seven-one, consultation with attorney regarding legal matters involving declaration of local state of disaster emergency orders and related regulatory issues. And thirteen B, the city council shall recess its regular session and convene into executive session as provided by Texas Government Code five-five-one-point-oh-seven-one to deliberate upon, seek the legal advice of, and direct its litigation counsel regarding the Smith et al versus the City of Bastrop et al lawsuit pending as civil action number one nineteen dash CV ten fifty-four in the U.S. District Court, Western District of Texas, Austin Division. It is eight fifty-nine and we are in executive session. Okay, Council, it is nine forty-six and we are back in regular session. On item fourteen, take any necessary or appropriate action on matters posted for consideration in the closed executive session. There will be, um, no actions taken. That brings us to item fifteen. Councilmember Peterson?
Motion to adjourn.
It is nine forty-six and we are adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone stay safe.
Thanks, Doc.
See y'all soon.